This conference will now be recorded.
He's so sweet.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. I'd like to call the meeting to order. There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second. Trustee Stetser.
We're all called. Trustee Keating.
Keating, aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Lanfair, aye.
Let me see where do you all go. Trustee Lightkeb.
Lightkeb, aye.
Trustee Stetser.
Stetser, aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Plummer, aye.
Motion passes.
Before we start, does anybody have any disclosures or conflicts of interest with any of the agenda items before us this evening?
Lanfair, I do not.
Stetser does not.
Lightkeb, I do not.
Keating, I do not.
Plummer, I do not. Okay, with that being said, we have a first item on the agenda, and this is a review of the non-municipal permit that was granted on February 17. Steve, are you here? And Jeff, you're here as well? Jeff?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I'm here.
Okay. Yeah, Steve, if you could just give us a little bit of background on this.
Um, can everybody hear me all right?
Yep.
Yes.
All right, just because my screen's really screwed up, so I didn't know if I was connected right. But due to our code, I guess I don't quite know where to go with this, but I will say that part of the issue here, the original approval that I, my understanding, our original, or the original proposal was for two 12-foot by 25-foot little garden plots that would have a couple of classes run at it. And technically, under the code, even then, would have required reviews under our code for LWRP. That probably would be about it for it, or we actually could have required site plan approval for that based on our code. The reality of the situation is that, like I said, there was two plots, 12 by 25 approved, that totaled 600 square feet. 24,000 square feet of ground is bare up there. 24,000 square feet. Requires, under our code, four different levels of review. Stormwater, SEACR, LWRP, and site plan. Those things were never done, and in reality, we may, we probably should have done a review prior to an approval for, just my opinion, I guess, but we should have done a review before any approval to have anything done up on that site. And as it stands now, what was done is way beyond the scope of what was originally talked about and approved. And at this point, all those reviews need to be done before anything else happens on that 10 acres of property.
Jeff, is there anything you'd like to add to that? Just, you know, because I know you've been reviewing this as well.
No, I think Steve hit it on the head. Exactly. Now that we're into this, I think that it really behooves the village to have a total plan for what that parcel is going to be and what's going to be used with it. Certainly, in the SEACR process, if you are contemplating more than one action, you shouldn't be segmenting it. So, you know, when I, when this first came to the board, honestly, I thought it was going to be a demonstration. I didn't realize we were actually doing plantings. But I agree with Steve that once you start doing that, you get into minor site plan, you get into SEACR, and you get into a local waterfront consistency. You know, the question is whether or not the village wants to apply zoning to this process. I think no matter whether or not the village decides to apply zoning, that doesn't obviate the need to do SEACR. That's, that would happen notwithstanding anything. And just by way of a reference, I will tell you that when the town, and the reason we might not want to apply zoning would be because we're a municipal entity, and sometimes zoning does not apply to when a municipality is going to do work. But it's a balancing test to decide that. And I could tell you that when we looked at the rec center as a village, although we really didn't get a chance to look at it thoroughly, our position was that zoning should have applied. We didn't, we were not aggressive in taking that position, but I think that was the general thinking. So, you know, I leave that to the board, whether or not zoning should apply this, but SEACR is going to reply nonetheless.
Yeah, one thing I want, I guess I want to add too, and so people do understand, under our code, there are two separate references in our code that reference one-quarter acre. And one-quarter acre is 11,160 square feet. And as I said, if you go up and actually look at everything that's been cleared, all the areas up there, it's over 24,000 square feet. So, those requirements are set in stone.
So, but the requirement, the SEACR requirement really turns on the SEACR regulation and regulations. And this is an unlisted action. It's occurring adjacent to a historic resource, so it's a type 1 automatically. Notwithstanding anything that our, that our code might say, but I agree, I agree with Steve's interpretation. It's a type 1, under our code, it's a type 1 either way.
Can you speak to sort of timeframes for this? Steve and Jeff, both of you, whoever wants to weigh in, so we all can understand, you know, for this type of review process, you know, as a type 1 SEACR, what that entails. And also, you mentioned some of the other reviews, you know, for example, the LWRP and the stormwater review. I think that's helpful, not only for our board, but also for everybody listening this evening. Just the timeframes and the process in general.
Steve, you want that, or you want me to? I mean, I don't, I'm not great with the timeframes required by publication and all that, but at least some of this stuff would require a public hearing if you decide to apply the zoning code. But for SEACR, there's a 30-day window, not, you know, just to send out notices. But if, if the village was going to apply zoning, then minor site plan and LWC would be a public hearing. That brings the publication time constraints with it, and Dorothea knows those much better than I do.
And also, I believe in, but I'm, I'm not an expert on SEACR, but I believe SEACR has a 60-day window for the involved date. When you reach out to other agencies to see if they want to have input on it, I believe they have a 60-day window to reply.
The 30, Steve, it's a 30-day window for SEACR? Yeah?
That's 30.
Okay.
Okay, so 30 days, all right. Okay. And then the LWRP, all of those can go on concurrently? Or how does, you know, just again, in terms of process, how does that look? The stormwater review?
I don't know. Steve has to speak to the stormwater review.
Okay, okay.
How the, how the planning board would wish to deal with minor site plan conjoined with an LWC review would be up to the planning board.
Okay.
And all of it takes a completed plan. I mean, a plan. It has to have a landscape plan. It has, I mean, we have to have a plan for the total. As Jeff said, you cannot segment. It has been found in, in court cases that you can't segmentate a project like this. If you're going to affect the parcel, you need to have a plan for what the total, you know, total expectation for the parcel is.
Okay, so we're looking, so essentially, the entire 10 acres. Not just, okay, thank you. That's helpful. Thank you, I appreciate that. Just, do the other board members have any other questions about this?
Yeah. I have a question. So, first of all, I just want to underline that I've not heard anybody say that they're against this. It's all just a matter of wanting to do it by the book and needing to do it by the book. So I just want to be clear about that. My question is around, and it's a half-baked idea, please hear me out on this. Given that some work has been done and, and the work on it has stopped, and this might be more of a question for Zach, I don't know, is, is there anything that we need to do to, to prevent erosion or something like that, given that some of this has been taken out? Because you take things out, and then lots of rain, and then erosion, and those kinds of things. So, given that some work has happened, is there anything we need to shore it up while this process goes on?
Steve, I know you can speak to that, and also, you know, you pulled in the engineer as well for the village about remediation. Can you speak to that, please? Steve?
Oh, yeah. I thought you said it was Zach. Zach was ready to speak.
I didn't see Zach. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed Zach. Apologies.
We did pull in Scott Harder and go over what needs to be done to stabilize the area. We, Zach, I believe, has put up silt fence, they put up some straw bales for erosion. They are taking steps to, to comply with the rules and regulations of stormwater to stabilize the soil. They can't do it all at once. We're doing it within the regulations. Zach has somebody doing a bit. As long as it's active, every seven days it's active, it does not have a total, total stabilization, as long as the site is being worked continually.
Zach, anything you would like to add, or is that covered, or?
Yeah, no, no, that covers it. We brought in about 4,000 linear feet of silt fence and about 40 straw bales and set them up around the perimeter of the areas that were exposed. Places that we did not put up silt fence, there are berms built up to be able to protect the area. So it's, it's pretty well contained at this point.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or thoughts from the board? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Justin, yes, hi.
Sure. Thank you, Elisa, and thank you, everyone, for the, the time that's been spent on making sure that we do this correctly. I wanted to echo Dan's sentiment that this is a project that, you know, personally, I think is a very good one, and I think that we've, we've all expressed agreement with the, the goals of this project. I'd like to mention that further, it seems to be aligned with the, the goals of the village in terms of the comprehensive plan, where we set the, the value of being a champion of sustainable development, a champion of sustainability, I'm sorry, on, on page 49, I think it was, of the, the comprehensive plan. And it also seems very closely aligned with the goals of the open space district, where this is located in our zoning code. And so, that said, you know, I have a lot of questions. There have been a lot of legal, technical issues brought up here. And I think that, you know, some of them are easier to work through than others. But I've been a little bit surprised at the, what, what I've seen is the approach to this compared to past actions of the board. In the past, I've seen cases where, for example, in the case of Harley Day Hots, the, the hot dog stand that we have on Main Street, we went out of our way to find an old part of code that hadn't been used. And, and we used our resources to find that, to figure out a way that this project could go ahead, that we all agreed with. In the case of the Shane Place Pavilion, we actually changed a couple of our laws, because we all agreed with the project and, and thought that it should succeed. In this case, I've really seen a lot of obstacles put up to this project that's oriented towards our shared value of sustainability. And I just want to, I think that we're all on the same page in terms of the values. And I would just like to express that, you know, I really hope that we can work together to make this a success, since it is aligned with one of the core values of the village that we've expressed in so many different ways. So I do have other questions technically about how we can make this go forward. We, and maybe one of the things that strikes me first is that it seems like there are actually two things going here, going on here. And I'm wondering why we're combining them as, as one thing. So it seems like the 24,000 square feet that you mentioned, Steve, this is 0.55 acres. And I did walk around that part of the, the land shortly after it was cleared. And it does seem like about 0.52 acres or so were, were cleared, at least that I could see. So I don't doubt your, your figure there, that, that seems accurate. But, but these gardens are actually going to be on 600 square feet, and that's what was approved by the board. So I can find the board approval in terms of these gardens, and I don't see the approval for the clearing of the land. So I understand the, the desire to not, you know, we can't segment this and, and make it look like smaller projects by breaking it up into smaller chunks. But why are we necessarily tying these two together? And saying that, well, because there was clearing that wasn't authorized by the board, then the, the installation of the permaculture gardens can't go forward. And, and as a follow-up question to that, I'm wondering if, you know, if something was cleared, and as I understand, the intent was to clear invasive species, why would we not do something that appears to me to be a remedy, which is installing native species, planting native species in these gardens? So I guess those, those are my questions to start things out, and I might have others too. But again, I appreciate all the effort on this, and I also want to make sure it's done right and, and also in line with our, our goals, the village.
Jeff, could you speak to the, the legal aspects of this, you know, that, that were raised by Trustee Lightkeb?
Well, I mean, I think he's put his finger right on it, and that is segmentation. As Steve said, even the small plot gardens would require, could require minor site plan review, and I think they do, under a strict reading of the code. They are landscaping for a non-residential use. You know, that's, that's a definition of a minor, what requires minor site plan. So, once you would do SEACR for that, which I, you know, I think it's kind of a mix, but it is precisely because you do not want to segment that one shouldn't really go forward without a plan for the whole. I mean, I think that's the, that's the concept of segmentation, as Justin just said, or Trustee Lightkeb.
I also would like to speak to the examples used of Harley Day Hots and the Shane Place Pavilion. I think, you know, relative to Harley Day Hots, I think that's different than really what we're, we're addressing here, which is the last 10 acres of open space that's land designated for the public use. And it should be involving our residents in terms of how we move forward with a comprehensive and overall plan. I support the goals of all of this. I think this is fantastic. I just want to make sure that we're doing this in a right way, and we're working with our residents, and we're getting the best possible outcome for everybody. This isn't denying anything. This is making sure we're moving forward in a positive way and complying with our codes and our laws. Regarding the Shane Place Pavilion, my understanding was that, while there were variances for parking, that there also was an amendment to the tavern overlay, which was evidently that part of the Shane Place had been left out of the tavern overlay. So to me, that was a little bit of a different circumstance. I think what we're looking at now before us is a tremendous opportunity to have the public engaged and get the best possible outcome for this nature preserve and wildlife preserve. So that, that's all this is. There was something else I was just thinking. I lost my train of thought. But anyway, that, that's just sort of my, my, I think the scope of this is far beyond, you know, the hot dog, Harley Day Hots, or even making some amendments to the tavern overlay for the Shane Place Pavilion. This, this is a big project for our village and should engage everyone. And we need to get the best possible plan that we can, working with our residents to do so and complying with the code. And I also made my thoughts known to the board, so in a memorandum that I circulated with you all, and I appreciate if you would also weigh in on that as well. Dan, your hand's up, yes?
Yeah, so I just have a question of, we know what, what wants to be done with this little piece of it, which is wonderful. And we, and I hear what you're saying, Steve and Jeff, about, hey, you got to have a plan for the whole thing. But we might not have a fully fleshed-out plan for the whole thing, and I would hate to see that delay the small piece that we do know. So are we able to put a whole plan together that says something along the lines of, we know what we're going to do with this space, we, we're a little less certain about the other space? And is that an acceptable thing to do? Because I don't want to see us delay, do you see what I mean? I don't want to see us delay the planting, which we all know we want to do, to make a larger plan, which might be a little more uncertain.
I mean, I'll, I'll take that, but I, I want to speak to something else as well. I don't think the plan has to be, we're going to put this shrub here, and we're going to put that tree there. I think the plan has to be, this is what we're planning to do with this property in total. And given that plan, these are the SEACR considerations. In terms of the question of the Harley Day Hots and the Pavilion, you know, while they are maybe philosophically different, we didn't handle them legally different. I mean, we were, we were very careful about jumping through all the hoops, getting the code set up the way we could to do the things we do, and it didn't happen in two weeks. That was a, a process to get from where we were with the code to where we needed to be with code, both for Harley Day Hots and the Pavilion. So that's really, essentially, we're talking about the same kind of detailed dotting the i's, crossing the t's process.
Can you also speak to, and I think it would help everybody understand, because my understanding of when a non-municipal use permit is granted, it is, it's event-oriented and ephemeral. In other words, you're teaching somebody, you're, maybe it's a food, I don't know, some other type of event. But in this instance, what was approved was something that would be installed and cared for on land that's owned by the village. Does that fall under the purview of a non-municipal use permit? Or can, can you address that as well?
Generally, a non-municipal use permit is for use, not modifications or alterations. You would, once, this is non-municipal land. So once it's an alteration or modification of municipal property, it really becomes a municipal project. And it's not really the sub, it really shouldn't be the subject of a non-municipal use permit if there's going to be permanent modifications to property. I mean, that's how I look at it.
So if there's a permanent modification to the property, which, which you're saying is, in this instance, would be the permaculture gardens, then what would that process be? What, what should we be doing then?
I think that's a minor site plan approval.
Okay, okay.
And, but if, again, I reiterate, if the village chose not to apply its zoning, because it's a village municipal project, at the very least, you would have to do SEACR.
Okay.
Because it's an unlisted action adjacent to an historic resource.
Okay, yep. Justin, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, just some, some follow-up questions. I mean, I think that I agree with what Dan was saying about, you know, not letting the, the larger, the lack of a larger plan, which I don't think that we have in the 10-acre parcel at this point, get in the way of planting a couple of gardens on 600 square feet. And I agree with that. And, you know, I think that some of this might be, and this might relate to the segmentation problem as well. You know, this really seems to be about top-down versus bottom-up activities that promote sustainability. If, if we do say that as a municipality, we need a whole plan here, you know, that could take a lot of time and a lot of money, which is, you know, segues into the, the budget topic for later this meeting. But if we don't want that to get in the way, you know, I think that as a municipality, if we just say that we agree in these, on these values, you know, to me, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of liability or, or risk in allowing these gardens to, to be planted. You know, I understand that they're going to be just plants, it's going to be some, some mulch or something, and maybe some decomposable cardboard. You know, it seems like in, in the worst-case scenario, if we decide to go in a different direction later on with a plan, well, we take a shovel and, and turn it into compost, you know, and, and plant the garden somewhere else. It doesn't seem to me to be, there doesn't seem to be a huge amount of risk in this action that already seems to have been approved by the board. I guess as a follow-up, the biggest, in terms of the timeframe, the biggest item that stands in the way of the, the May 23rd events, I guess, is the SEACR review. And I was just wondering about the, you know, it seems like that might have been an oversight by the board, that we would need that for the 600-square-foot gardens, even if we can break that apart from the, the initial clearing of the area, which I hope that we can. If, so the, the remedy for not following SEACR, if, if we didn't adhere to the SEACR requirements, I understand would be that we would have to discontinue the project. So what, you know, maybe this is a question for Mr. Turner. What would be the risk in discontinuing the, the permaculture project? It sounds like we would basically just, you know, shovel the, the gardens into a pile? Or is there something that I'm, I'm missing there?
Well, I mean, as I understand SEACR, you, you're really supposed to complete SEACR before you do the project. I mean, I, what you're really talking about is going ahead and doing the project without doing SEACR, I think, if I'm understanding correctly.
Jeff, didn't you say, though, that SEACR only applies if it's on a quarter of an acre? We're talking 600. The original non-municipal use permit was for demonstration gardens on 600 square feet. So we are, come back to what Trustee Lightkeb was saying earlier. We're kind of combining two things, and I get the segmentation issue here. But the, if nothing would have been disturbed there, the end of March, would the non-municipal use permit for the March event, or I'm sorry, May event, on that 600 square feet of, you know, 12 by 25 two gardens, would that be able to continue? You're saying possibly we would have needed to do an LWRP on that, just to give them a demonstr, just to allow permission for a demonstration on 600 square feet of garden there?
It's not a demonstration. It's, it's, if I'm correct, Jeff, if I'm understanding, I'm sorry to jump in, because I'm trying to get through this as well. It's not just a demonstration. There's something permanent that's being left behind to be maintained, I guess, on public land. And is there a plan in place for that as well? And is that, that's what I'm understanding is the difference?
The SEACR component of this is not just our code reliant. SEACR relies on the SEACR regulations. And this is an unlisted action adjacent to a historic resource, which makes it a SEACR, or makes a, makes it an unlisted action.
I thought you said that only applied if it was on a quarter of an acre or over.
Steve said that's in our code. Steve said in, in our code, separate and apart from SEACR regulations, there's a quarter-acre threshold.
So this is a tenth of an acre?
Right, but that's irrelevant, the acreage is irrelevant to whether or not this is an unlisted action. It's an unlisted action, so that's type, that's a, that's an unlisted action review, but it's bumped up to a type 1 because it's adjacent to an historic resource. We did, we get into that all the time, because so much of the village is historic.
So, Lily had her hand up too, I don't want to.
That's okay, go, finish your thought.
Well, so, so my, my question here again is, you know, we're, I understand that we're fiduciaries for the village. We, we are responsible for making sure that we're, we're not making big mistakes here, and I take that very seriously. But my understanding of SEACR, and I'm not an attorney, so this is where I'm looking to you, Jeff, our exposure here, our liability, if we don't properly conduct SEACR, is that we would have to stop the project. And the project that we're talking about here is 600 square, a tenth of an acre of gardens. So maybe we'd, you know, So maybe we'd, you know, um, dig them up, right? I mean, is there, is there other liability that we're exposed to there if we let this occur?
So can I jump in on that? So my concern was the fines. Remember, we talked about that, Justin? I, I hear exactly what you're saying. If the worst-case scenario is just we have to make some changes, that sounds great. What I was concerned about was, you were in the room when we talked about this with Steve, was the possibility around pretty significant fines. So if those are a possibility, or not a possibility, it really changes things.
Steve, could you speak to the fines, so we all understand what that means?
Uh, yeah, and that's, that's a thing we've tried to avoid. I, I actually, when this all came down and was presented to me, I contacted the head of the Stormwater Coalition of Monroe County and, um, and talked to him in regards to the DEC function that, that we, we would hope isn't involved in this. Cause the DEC tends to come in and find you first and ask questions later. And this may not, I, you know, I hate to say this is my opinion, but if in reality, I think if they would have gone up there and put two 12-by-25 plots in and planted some plants, I don't think anybody would have really said anything. I don't think the DEC or anybody would ever come in and, and have a problem with it, because it was doing something good. But that's not the reality we're dealing with. The reality that we're dealing with, instead of 600 square feet, is 24,000 square feet. So how do we separate what was done already up there versus what was approved? And it, that's up to the board, how you guys go forward in, in trying to, i- if you choose to try and let them do two small plots. But the reality is, like you said, if they would have done two 12-by-25 spots, planted them and had their, the, the little thing, I don't think anybody would have had a, a real issue with it. I don't think the DEC would, you know, the possibility of them coming in and complaining, or anybody complaining about the code was very minimal, but that's not the reality. The reality is 24,000 square feet. And, uh, I mean, it is what it is now.
Okay, okay, thanks, Steve. Lily, I see you, but just, just very quickly, I wanna ask you, when you say fines, I don't even understand, like, give us a sense of financial, the cost? What would that look like? I don't even know.
Um, they, they like to throw around a figure of $10,000.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yeah, Lily, you had your hand up, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. So, given what Steve has laid out for the board and the reality, I am wondering if we can, as a board, come up with some positive, um, measures that we might take that might not be exactly what, uh, the Frog House had in mind for the original demonstration, but would fit the criteria laid out in a non-municipal use permit, which would then not trigger Saker. I mean, clearly, we have two separate, in my, in my estimation, in my opinion, we have two separate situations happening. One is a non-municipal use permit, which upon closer examination, did not fit the criteria for our non-municipal use permit. And we have an action that took place that was not necessarily, uh, part, and it was not part of the non-municipal use permit. So put the clearing of the land aside for us to deal with at another time, continuing with Saker, LWRP, whatever needs to occur. And look at just the non-municipal use permit request that we have received. How can we make that work? Here is a group that wants to contribute, uh, and we want to encourage that, as we've all indicated. So how, using all of our, our, our expertise here and our, and our thinking, come up with an idea or ideas that could work, that could let, let the non-municipal use permit, under different, um, criteria, move forward? And perhaps create, um, a nursery? In other words, not put it on the land that has been cleared, which is problematic, but put it in a different section that might serve as a nursery to be transplanted once the ground has been, um, deemed safe for that. But it, I understand it's not a perfect, uh, result, because you're not stabilizing the, the ground that has been disturbed currently. But given that it's not gonna be a perfect solution, what can we do as a village to encourage and, um, have let, as, I think it's Justin's point from the beginning, if I might go back to that, was that the village has really tried to be accommodating when we've received applications, whether it was for the Pavilion, although they're not the same, but for whatever they were, we've really tried, I think, to work as a board to accommodate and to make things work when we've been, we made, a great request was made. I'd like to see us do the same in this instance. We have a request for a non-municipal use permit. It's a, sounds like a, a lovely event, uh, that can involve families and children. What can we do as a village to make that work? And that's my, that's what I'm putting out to the board.
Uh, you know, I'd like to speak to, I think it was, and maybe this wasn't under the, the original, the non-municipal use permit, but it was brought up, uh, the milkweed seeding. Maybe, you know, the prior board members can speak to that, what that project was. But, um, I was thinking, right along the canal path, there is signage already about, um, saving the monarchs. It was the kids in fourth grade at Alice Creek installed those signs several years ago. And I think it'd be wonderful to hold the event there for, you know, uh, the milkweed seeding along the canal path. Um, we could maybe, you know, encourage the Frog House to work with the Canal Corporation. It's their land, and I think as a village and a municipality, we would support that, because it would work in conjunction with the work that the school kids have already done to raise awareness about, uh, you know, the endangered monarchs. So I put that out there before the board and everybody listening tonight, that that could be an opportunity. Any other thoughts from the board? Lily, did you have any thoughts about how to proceed as well?
Actually, actually, I was looking for ideas, um, because I really feel I, that if we just change the wording somewhat in the original, um, non-municipal use permit request, that we can not be in a position of rescinding the, the non-municipal use permit, but rather, um, changing the, some of the wording that would allow us to let them have their event, um, with a couple of changes. And that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing, how, how can we separate these two? You know, the unfortunate incident, I don't think it should be, make it preclude that the, um, that this event, this lovely event would not happen. So I think you have, uh, Mayor Plummer, you've put forth a, an idea, and I'm wondering if any of the other trustees might also have ideas.
Dan, I saw your hand, yeah, Dan.
Yeah, Lily, I, I totally agree with you. I think that's a really good approach to it. I wonder, should we ask, um, the Frog House to also contribute some ideas? Because, so now we all know that we've gotta slow down on, on the actual plantings. So is, is there something else that would fit their event that wouldn't require that? That then they could amend the, um, the, uh, application?
And, and just as a point of clarity, the agenda item is not about rescinding the permit. It's about reviewing it, and this is what we're doing. And I think this is helpful for us, um, to educate the public about this and kind of what has happened a little bit, and, uh, work towards a positive solution. I think that's great. So all ideas are welcome, um, you know, that fit within the purview of what a non-municipal use permit would be.
May we then hear some, if anyone's here that might have an idea or an approach that, that the board could consider?
Sure, sure. I'd be happy to speak. This is Margot. Hi, everybody. First of all, I wanna thank you all so much for the time, energy, thoughtfulness, and consideration that you're putting into this. I think it's really awesome, and, uh, I love the, the Village of Pittsburgh, and I love the, the trustees and the mayor, and, and I love Zach. I love all of you for everything that you do. And I don't know how to put up my picture. Oh, you wanna see me? I'm dressed appropriately for the occasion, as Frog. Anyway, I have the very awkward name of, of Frog House, so we have to talk about the Frog House. Anyway, um, I just would like to, to, uh, say that it's my understanding that the, uh, work completed, Conformed to Public or Private Best Forest Management Silviculture Practices on Less Than 10 Acres of Land, as defined by the Saker Law 617.5, is therefore deemed a Type II action. Under New York, Saker Type II actions have been determined not to have a significant impact on the environment or otherwise precluded from, uh, Environmental Review under Environmental Conservation Law Article 8. The actions defined, identified in subdivision C apply to all agencies. The "all agencies" reference refers to all governmental agencies in New York State, including the Village of Pittsburgh. In the work completed in the Arboretum, no changes were made to grading, drainage flow, removal of topsoil, or impacts to native, native plants or wildlife. The work completed is correctly classified as Type II action, requiring no further review and allowing the work to con- continue. And the seeding needs to, to, uh, to proceed. So I'm not exactly addressing the question asked, and I will address it in just a second. But one thing, the milkweed project, uh, right now, I have too many things I might like to talk to the canal authorities, but, uh, I love working with the village and the village board. But the milkweed, had it, could it be seeded right away? Would help to, uh, to attract the, the butterflies up in that area. And it also would, um, preclude more of spread of the invasives. One of the color Pittsburgh green persons, and a number of them are keeping a close watch on, on what the village is doing, because they care about native wildlife and, and, uh, trees and flora and fauna. But, um, said that this, uh, salantadine is coming in in droves, and it's very, very hard to get rid of. But the best, like, the Japanese knotweed was, was plowed out. The best thing to do is to plant in some native plants right away. So, um, whether you go forward this with the Arboretum, permit forest in a nutshell project or not, I do appreciate the, the village wanting to save that land and, uh, not just let it all go to, to invasive, uh, uh, plants, and then eventually be cemented over for condos or something like that. So that you do that, I really, really appreciate it. Now, for my own ideas, if you don't want it to, or I, I guess you want it, but if it doesn't seem possible, uh, given the legal parts that I said, we could, right down at the northern corner of the, the place where the, the Frog Pond Trail cuts off from the Auburn Trail, there, there's a trail that goes up the hill, um, to the left if you're coming in from those storage areas. It goes up the hill to the left, and right before it goes up the hill, that area has not been disturbed at all. It could be cleared, and, uh, pretty easily. There're just some fallen trees and some pervy trees there, and the arboretum could be put there. Uh, and I'm, I'm sorry, the forest in the nutshell could be that, put there in the ceiling bed, could be, be put there. So that's another alternative. The other alternative, another alternative is just as I think Dan or Justin, uh, suggested, is we put it in, and if we're fined, which I don't think that we're breaking any laws, um, then, um, Frog House will raise the money to pay fine, or, or we will, um, we'll move it. So again, with much, much appreciation to Steve and Jeff and Justin and Renee and Zach and Lily and Dorothea and Dan and, and you, Mayor Plummer. Really, really appreciate your help, and also my friends and companions in need of life, wildlife work on this meeting.
Oh, Jeff, did you, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up, or were you?
No, but I was thinking about it. I would, I would, I would just speak to the Saker. I think, um, Dr. Foss is referencing, um, sub-paragraph 20 of the Type II Actions, which states, "Public or prias, uh, private best forest management trends, silviculture and trends practices on less than 10 acres of land." But, and this is the important part, but not including waste disposal, land clearing, not directly related to forest management, clearcutting, or the application of herbicides or pesticides. So, you know, there, while public or private best forest management is a Type II action, when you go to clearcutting, which is, I understand, what was done here, then you're no longer in the Type II list.
So we're no longer in the Type II?
I'm, resort to my reading of the, the regulations.
Okay, so then it says Type I. Am I, that's the takeaway?
Yes.
Okay, just trying to close out that loop. Yeah, Lily.
Okay. Again, I'm going to ask to separate the two. And I don't think at this time, we're not, no one's putting out an argument regarding Saker Type I or II on the portion of property that was cleared. As Steve likes to, I will, he's like to say, the 24,000 square feet. We're not talking about that now. Let's take that off the table if we, if we may. We're talking about specifically a non-municipal use permit, and how, how that municipal use permit may move forward. And as Margot made a suggestion, Mayor Plummer made a suggestion, and I don't think that either of those suggestions would trigger Saker, unless I'm mistaken. Is that correct, Jeff?
My understanding...
Neither of those, non-municipal use permit would trigger Saker?
My understanding of Dr. Foss's, um, suggestion is that they would actually be doing gardening, landscaping.
So that would mean that if I wanted to put a garden in?
No.
That...
You're residential.
Now, residential, okay. Let's say what's happening is, is they're requested, even if we change the size, let's make it 12 by 20. 12 by 20 garden, and they would like to put a 12 by 20 garden in, uh, with milkweed. Does that trigger Saker?
Technically, it triggers...
That's my question.
Technically, yes. There's nothing in the, in the list, unlist, or the Type II actions that would cover that. Now, you, you know, I, I was asked a question and, and never had an opportunity to answer, and that's fine. But, yeah, you could ignore Saker. Whether that's a, you know, a great idea procedurally and, um, for the future, I, you know, I, I leave that to the board. I would think that it sets a precedent that maybe you don't wanna, wanna set, that, you know, in certain circumstances, we will ignore Saker, and others, we won't. It seems a slippery slope, but, you know, again, as Steve pointed out a while ago, and I think Steve wants to make another comment, um, this really is up to the board. We're just here to tell you what our view of the law and regulations are.
Okay, thank you, cause my question was, does this action, this non-municipal use permit, trigger Saker?
The answer was yes.
Okay.
Okay, Steve, you have your hand up, yeah.
Yeah, cause part of the, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Jeff, it's part of the, the trigger is the clearing, um, in, in, under the regulations. So my question would be... Steve, no, that's not right. It's not the clearing. The fact is that this, that the, just focusing totally on what was approved in the special permit, and, and at the meeting I attended, I really thought that this was a demonstration, not a, not a gardening project. This, that, and it, it's not a listed action. It's not a Type II listed action. Makes it an unlisted action, which kicks it up to being a Type I because of where it is. I mean, that's just, that's the interpretation I have of the Saker regs. I mean, me, you know, maybe somebody would interpret them differently. But if it's, I couldn't find it on the list anywhere, that means it's unlisted. So Jason, who has no historic research, makes it Type I. At least that's my...
Hey, Jeff, just out of curiosity, wasn't it, and I'm not, I'm not an expert on it also, but isn't there a maintenance provision that you're allowed to do maintenance to a piece?
There's, there is maintenance, but is this maintenance?
Well, my question would be, i- if there was a spot that they didn't have to rip things out of and just were planting some extra plants in there for a demonstration, does that meet the requirement for SEACER? If, if they don't have to take out plants, trees, you know, really change the contour of the space for a small 12 by 25 or two 12 by 25 spots, if they're just planting some extra things for a demonstration and not disturbing the basic area, is that something that's allowable?
You tell me, is it maintenance or not? Or is it, is it improvement?
Go, go, Justin.
I, yeah, just, so it seems like there, there may be a little bit of room for interpretation here. And, and I just wanted to, to go back to the, the point a moment ago about what our exposure is with SEACER. My understanding is that, Steve, when you talk about the fines, you're talking about a fine for the, from the DEC for not doing the speedist permit related to stormwater, which is a different thing than the SEACER approval. And, you know, I, I looked over briefly, I'm not an expert in this area at all, but I looked over the stormwater requirements. And it seems like since this is not a construction activity, there's no point source of water. It's a flat area that we're talking about, and it's far from designated wetlands. The designated wetlands being the ponds or the canal. I, I personally don't have a huge concern about those, about fines from the DEC related to stormwater in the area that we've discussed. We could, we could talk about that in other areas. But going back to the SEACER, it seems like there's room for interpretation. We could move it to another part of the parcel based on the size of the parcel we're talking about here. There are 700 different places that we could put these gardens in, in the 10 acres, right? Based on the, the square footage of the gardens, there are 700 different places we can put it. If we need to move it, I would say, let's move it. From what I read about SEACER, if we were wrong and we don't do SEACER, somebody would have to sue us with an article 78. And then the repercussion would be that we wouldn't be able to keep the gardens going. And I guess, you know, if, if my understanding is wrong, let me know. But I don't see a whole lot of liability there.
I, I'd like to talk, have the attorney address, and I thank you, Justin, for, for that. I'd like to have our attorney address because he's familiar with the exposure of our village in terms of liability if we, if, if we don't do SEACER. And go ahead with something. What, what is the, what is the liability to our village?
It, it is as trustee Lakev suggests. It's, it's, you stop the music and you start over and you do SEACER and then you do what you do from there. There's no fine. That, that has to do with the stormwater. I mean, so in order to follow the course that trustee Lakev is suggesting, you have to first say that planting is maintenance. And, you know, whatever, whatever is that, the answer to that question is, whatever the answer to the question is. But really, that answer has to come from, Steve, I'm sorry about this, has to come from the code enforcement guy who says, who categorizes the action. And then that same code enforcement officer has to say, notwithstanding the language of our code, this does not require minor site plan approval. And once that happens, then if it's indeed a type 2 action, the trustees deem it a type 2 action, then local waterfront consistency is not implicated. It doesn't need to be done. And you can do whatever you want. But it, it really takes that determination in the file that this is not minor site plan or this does not require minor site plan approval. The other alternative is for the trustees to say that even if it is minor site plan approval, we're not going to have our zoning code apply to this, this project. And it is, you know, we understand that really this is a project that the village is doing, not the Frog House is doing. It's the village's project.
So, okay, so, and then there's a cost associated, obviously, with that. You know, I, I, I think we're kind of in a little bit of a, between a rock and a hard place because we're saying that, you know, we really do want to support our environment. We really are all for this, yet we're not going to do the environmental review that's required. So, you know, we're sort of discounting something that is part of the environmental process that's been in place. But I'm wondering, is there a way that we could, like, the event could be held where maybe we're not, I don't know, maybe we're not disturbing the gardens? Maybe it's more of a teaching workshop in a different way? And then we do SEACER and then we, we, we do it correctly? And then there's like a part two of the permaculture where the gardens are installed and it's done through the process? I'm just looking, you know, maybe part one, part two. I mean, again, we all want to support this, but I don't know that, you know, the old throw the baby out with the bathwater. SEACER is in place for a reason. We're saying in our comp plan that we believe in supporting the environment and sustainability. And SEACER is part of that, as is the goals of, you know, the Frog House and our, our community at large. So I'm throwing out maybe a part one, part two. Dan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, to that point, Elisa, I wonder, is, is there something that we could do? And this idea came in from a, from a villager. Is there something that we could do that there, the planting is done above ground until SEACER happens? And then it's put in the ground in a part one and a part two? And I also, so that was one idea that I wanted to surface. The other thought that I wanted, and Justin, I agree with everything you said, except there was one part that I want to underline a little bit or shine a light on. And it was around, you said something along the lines of, well, it's not that close to the canal or to swampland and therefore the, the water isn't a problem. That may be true, but we've got to have somebody professionally tell us that. You may be right about that, I don't know. But I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure any of us are qualified to say that.
Steve, Steve can speak to that. And also because he's an expert, as is the engineer that I know you met with as well on the site.
Yeah, well, first off, I'm no expert.
Well, but I mean, you know, the codes, you know, you know, and-
It doesn't matter, Dan, it is the parcel. The whole parcel is subject to LWRP. Doesn't matter if you're disturbing a small piece and it's far away from the canal. The parcel itself is LWRP. It is designated all LWRP in our code. And I, I just want to speak to something else. And Justin, as far as the quarter acre threshold or the, the stormwater issue with the cleared land, our code clearly spells out a quarter acre threshold for requiring a SWIP. I, you know, like you said, this is a board decision. As I said before, I personally feel if, if two small plots would have been done for this demonstration as a originally proposed, I don't think there would be any issue with this. I personally, and I, and this, I guess you'd have to ask Justin Belisa or I believe Dave Marshall was on here, who's on the planning board, their thoughts on the whole site plan issue, if they would feel that, that it would be necessary for a site plan review for two, 300 square foot plots? I mean, they're the board that controls site plan. If, if they would give their blessing or found a way to allow it, I would think that would go a long way as to where we're going with this whole situation.
Steve, I want to, if I could, I got to correct something you said. That, you know, like, you know, it's not a great thing, but really this is your call. Whether or not it's minor site plan is, is your call. Based on an interpretation of the code and what you feel the work is being done. And then if it goes to the, the planning board because it requires minor site plan approval, then they take it from there. So-
Okay, excuse me, Lily, you had your hand up?
Thanks. I'm going to jump right on what Steve just said because let's take it back to the original request. Again, I'm going to repeat, and I'm sorry to do this. Let's take, remove the clearing that has occurred. Let's pretend it does not exist. And we're looking at a non-municipal use permit that has just been placed before us for two garden plots. And Steve said that he felt that it did not trigger anything, SEACER. It could be just on its own. Let's look at that and say, Marco did suggest another piece of the seven acre park for this planting or this demonstration or whatever we're willing to approve. And let's just look at it on its own and say, this, this would work. It just, we just needed to take it off of this very controversial piece of property or area that has occurred and that, that's going to need a separate lens. Right now, we're talking about a non-municipal use permit to plant milkweed. And that's what, that's what we're looking at. Two small plots and it doesn't trigger SEACER, as Steve just said. Why can't we just look at that and just change the location slightly?
So it's a, it's, it's a, it's a planting, not a demonstration, not a-
Demonstration, as a demonstration.
Demonstration and planting means something different to me. I'm not-
Okay.
Because, because that's what I keep trying to come back to. That's the part I need to understand. A non-municipal use permit is granted to an event where you're demonstrating something. When you're planting something on public land and leaving it, it becomes something permanent. Help me here, either Jeff or Steve, that doesn't fall under the purview of a non-municipal use permit?
Okay, because I was just echoing what Steve said.
I'd like to, you know, yeah, can we do some, how do we do it? What can we do with part one and part two? I made a proposal, you know?
Yeah, what can we do? Exactly. So what are the words we can use to make this happen? What are the words?
Well, all right. Normally, I would say that a non-municipal use permit is for a use, not improvement. It's, you, you use the sidewalk, you use the street. In this case, you're on the, the parkland doing what I thought was a demonstration. However, the board can approve work done to municipal property, which might include a special use permit. I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, non-municipal use permit. I mean, you could do, you could use that as a mechanism. And ultimately, the board is approving an improvement, approving an improvement to village property. The, the, my primary questions are, is planting maintenance? And if it's not maintenance, then it does it, it looks to me like it requires minor site plan approval and SEACER. If it is maintenance, then it's probably not minor site plan approval and it's probably not SEACER. So that's why I, you know, Steve and I try to pass the buck back and forth. But really, the CEO, the whole, the process is, the CEO makes a decision and then that, the public or whomever has an opportunity to challenge it. That's the way the system is set up.
Gotcha. Okay. I'm sorry, Justin, did you have your hand up or were you just?
Yeah, just, I, I agree with what trustee Lanpier was saying about separating this out from the initial clearing. It seems like the, the two, the 600 square feet of gardens is what we're talking about here. I was wondering, a possible question for Jeff. What would be, would we be able to have the LWRP consistency review done and the site plan done by the planning board at their May 17th meeting, which would still be prior to the scheduled event? Because as a former member of that board, I, I see a lot of value in the review that they're doing. So why not let them do it? You know, we, we've approved a non-municipal use permit. I, I'm curious whether or not that was even necessary because it seems like the use that we're talking about is actually allowed by right. In the open space district, it says that botanical gardens, which I think this could be qualified as, is a use that is allowed by right. So if we're talking about the non-municipal use permit in terms of approving the use, I, I wonder if we even need that at all? And if instead, we could just pass some kind of a resolution that says this work can go ahead? So I, I understand there's a question for Steve as well about whether this could be maintenance. I, so I won't try to influence him there. But just in terms of the, the legal questions about letting the, the planning board do their work with a site plan and LWRP since it is in the waterfront over the district. Curious about that.
Seems to me that, you know, again, if a minor site plan requires a public hearing, I'm not sure there would be enough time. I'm certain, I'm fairly certain there would be not, not enough time to publish and have the hearing on the 17th. In terms of whether or not, because it's permitted by code, does that obviate the need for minor site plan review? The answer is no. If it wasn't allowed by core code, it would require a variance first and then minor site plan. So just because something's code, it's acceptable under the code, doesn't mean you don't have to apply all the other rules that you have to apply when you're doing something. So site plan overrides or is superimposed, rather, on code permitted activities, if that helps.
So, you know, I'd like to try to close this out because we're, you know, this, and it's important, but we have, you know, an evening before us with other items on the agenda. And I think Lily's, you know, suggestion of, you know, how do we look at alternatives to make this happen? Maybe we don't solve that exactly tonight. I, I made a proposal that we maybe have a part one and a part two. And we can, you know, put those pieces in place, those environmental pieces in place in the interim. So the part two can be the, you know, the actual planting in the soil and maybe part one. And I would like, you know, Marco and everybody to think about that. Maybe a part one is, you know, as Lily was saying, maybe more of like, you know, a workshop where we're talking about it and all, all the pieces that need to be put in place. And it's, it's educational and informative and can engage the public. I still put that out there. I mean, I think Lily made a good suggestion. You know, let's try to come up with a way to work it under the permit. Yes, Renee?
So Marco mentioned the northern corner near the, the trail of the, the Auburn Trail. Would we be running into the same problem if it was located there? These same size plot, 600 square feet? If we were considering it maintenance? Or if the, I'm sorry, if the code enforcement officer determined that, you know, these, whatever the project was, was considered maintenance? Because so much was disturbed on this section of land, the end of March, can we still consider something in the northern corner?
If it was maintenance, if, if, if that's the decision that this is maintenance, then it doesn't trigger SEACER. And you would be not, segmentation would not be a problem. So you could go forward. Provided there aren't any stormwater problems that, that I'm, and I'm, certainly, I'm not an expert on stormwater stuff. So that would be the question, whether stormwater or responsibility is, MS4 is implicated.
Yeah, we wouldn't meet any thresholds on stormwater for two, two 12 by 25 plots.
So that's a viable option that was suggested by the applicant because I think it is important, as Lily has mentioned several times, that we, we keep these two things separate. The applicant versus the actions that occurred on the, the land the end of March, which has us in this position. So we're trying to find a way to still allow the, the non-municipal use to continue and so they can have a demonstration. So considering the northern garden, it sounds like, or whatever northern plot, northern corner is what she said, near the trail, sounds like it might be a good option.
So remember, I'm sorry, that's contingent on two things. One, this is maintenance. And two, a determination that it does, this, this activity does not require a minor site plan.
Could, how do we make that determination on the minor site plan? Who makes that call exactly? Is that the board, Steve, the lawyer, the trustees, who?
The lawyer never makes the call. And so it would be Steve or the board. And this is Steve.
Steve.
Sorry, Steve.
Well, you'd have to look at the site, am I correct? I mean, do you know where it is?
I, I'd like to see where she proposes, make sure it has public access, things like that. I'd, I'd like to see where she proposes, make sure it has public access, things like that. And then the, the board, the board, as Jeff said, the board can make a choice to not apply the zoning to this spot or to this application. Then my determination would be whether it's considered maintenance or not.
Okay. So can we do that? I mean, that could be an action item for us then to
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Lily, did you have your hand up?
I did, I, I'm sorry, pardon me. A villager has pointed out that we could call them demonstration gardens, which are not permanent. That's a different category, I think. So it would be considered maintenance. In other words, it's, they're a nursery that's going to be planted eventually, but, but it's not permanent. So yes, it's maintenance. What we're doing is we're maintaining a nature preserve. That's what we're doing. Unless somebody disagrees with that description of what, of what's occurring here by planting these native species to hold back erosion and to, and to attract, I assume the monarchs and that's the whole, the whole purpose of, of the, of this sustainable action that we're considering here.
Agree, so it's, it's maintaining a healthy ecosystem.
That's right. That's, that's the whole point.
Yep.
Okay, Steve, yes, yeah.
Yeah, and I, I guess I would, because, you know, you're kind of laying a lot on my plate here. Which is okay in some ways, but, but I think it would behoove me and probably the public if, and I don't know where we, we would fall. This would be, I guess, a legal question, but, but the board too. Because we are a municipality, you do have the right to circumvent the zoning as a municipality. And I would ask that the trustees take that issue up and allow me to take the issue up of the spot and maintenance.
And again, we're only talking about the non municipal use permit here for this event that was supposed to occur in May.
Clearly two new spots or two new little plots that have nothing to do with the damage or the, the area that was cleared before. I don't, I personally don't want anybody up there. It's not, I mean, we've touched it. If, if it was natural space and somebody tripped and they're walking through, that's one thing. But we have perfected the land and, and I think that leaves us for some legal liability if somebody were up on that space.
And right now you, you have it blocked off though Zach. And, and Steve, you guys, it's blocked. Am I correct? The access is blocked.
Yeah, so all the accesses are blocked at this point.
Pardon me?
Yes, all the accesses are blocked at this point.
Yeah, that, yeah, I remember you followed up. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I just want to clarify what the type two action actually would be. And that would be maintenance of existing, existing landscaping or natural growth. So it's got to be existing and you're maintaining.
Okay, it's existing. Do we need to make a motion? Does a motion need to be made? Or do we need to wait for Steve's assessment before we're able to make a motion?
I would think Steve would want to take a look at the area. You know, maybe, maybe Steve, you can, Margot can, you know, we can get together. Margot, you have an idea of where you're, you're thinking of, on, you know, on that side of the path? I think that would be, you know, we could turn that around pretty quickly. I'm, I'm thinking.
We got a meeting next week, right?
Yeah.
Tuesday, yeah.
So Steve, what? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask how he mentioned needing some support for us because we're putting a lot on him. So if your action item is to go walk that with Margot, you'll let us know what other support you need? I'm happy to walk, but gardening is not my daily wick. I don't know how, how helpful I will be. I'll be the person who trips over the, whatever, the tree.
Okay, so if I'm understanding correctly, let's turn this around. Maybe Steve, you and Mark, you know, you can take a look at, at what's proposed. We bring it right back. We, you know, you give us the feedback. We take a look at, you know, what we kind of need to do on our end to facilitate this. And we, yes, we have a meeting next Tuesday. Maybe, you know, we can turn it around. Does that make, is that what I'm hearing from everybody? I'm seeing some nodding. Unless you're nodding off, I don't know. Oh, oh, Dave, I see, yes, Dave?
Just a quick question I, I've raised in the chat, but haven't heard answered. If it were approved as a demonstration gardens, what other approvals would it be required? Would that allow it to be approved today or with the proper clarification of what was applied for?
I have no idea what a demonstration garden is, but if it involves something that's not
Temporary garden.
How would, I, I mean, I don't understand it. So Steve, I mean, if Steve understands what you're talking about, in order to answer
Out of secret.
Either, either way, I would like to see the spot. I would like to see exactly where they're going to put it and, and actually have it, have a plan of a spot. Not just, you know, like the northern corner where? I think we need to take a look at it to make sure we know exactly where and what it is before the
I agree, I agree with citing it. And I thought, and I think this goes back to what the mayor was sort of proposing earlier, is if we did treat it as a demonstration garden, a non-permanent, that doesn't require the higher level of approvals perhaps, and it could be taken out afterwards, then we have the time subsequently to go through a process to say, yes, we're going to approve this on a permanent basis going forward. But we would take the necessary steps, would allow this garden to take shape, at least temporarily, as a demonstration. And I agree with you, Steve, the site has to be nailed down specifically where it is. But I think that's a way to expedite it and still have the checks and balances that it's not going to stay there unless it meets the muster of the other requirements.
I just need to correct, maybe I wasn't clear. I wasn't saying temporarily plant a garden as a demonstration. I was saying maybe you speak to it on a, on a, on a lecturing level and maybe, you know, a supporting material. Because I think what happens, Dave, is once again, if we're doing anything even quote temporarily, we're still disturbing the soil, which is my understanding, then triggers the site plan review. So if there's another way to have sort of part one or part, you know, that part one where, you know, there's a meeting with the public, there's educational materials, you talk through maybe what it means to have a permaculture garden in place. And then we do have, as you said, the opportunity to put seeker in place and go through what we need to do. And then part two of that would be to plant the garden. Everybody comes back and we all plant the garden. I think it'd be great. So there's a couple of options here. One is looking at this additional site and us, you know, waiving certain requirements for this. Or maybe a part one and part two. That's all I was proposing. Part one was not disturbing the soil because that is, I think, what triggers all the other aspects of this.
So there is, there's a, there's a type two seeker action that's minor, or was it? Minor temporary uses of land having negligible or no permanent impact on the environment.
Okay.
And if, if I, so I don't know how you make a garden, garden temporary. You know, I'm, that's a little beyond me. But if it can be categorized as a minor temporary use of land, I don't know how you would plant a garden and have that minor and temporary, but I'll leave that to the experts.
I think it could be viewed seasonal, just like a planting, that it's not necessarily permanent. Then the board has to later take steps to allow a permanent garden to be there. And that goes through the other requirements of the approvals.
You, you would probably need some kind of surety to, to make sure it comes out if you need it to come out. But that, that doesn't obviate the, the minor site plan issue. So I think what Steve was saying to the board was if he determines it's minor site plan, what is the board going to do about applying or not applying the zoning code?
Correct.
And the board, and I'm not asking that as a question to be answered tonight. I'm, I'm asking that as a question to be thinking about.
Okay, so let's, let's close this out because I think, you know, we, we've spent a good deal of time. I think we, everybody's really addressed a lot of concerns and how we can really move forward in a positive way. My understanding is, and, and Steve, you can meet, and Margot, and whoever else, we can take a look at that site. And then you can report back to us. Let's turn this around quickly and be ready to move forward in some fashion at our next meeting. Is that what I'm understanding from the rest of the board as well? Can you all chime in? I'm, I'm seeing nodding, unless you're nodding off. Okay.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Okay, so at least we have I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor Plummer, there are several chats in the chat box. Some are very lengthy. I would just suggest that some of them have been already answered and reviewed by the board. And as long as the board has been following along with the chat, if they're comfortable with me not reading them. I know we tried to do that, but some are very lengthy and this will take a lot of time. So I'm going to leave that to the board as your request as to how you'd like to handle.
Okay, any thoughts from the board on that? I mean, I think we've, you know, weighed in on a lot of different things. Margot, yes, you had something you wanted to say?
I apologize, I'm not used to laws and rules. But anyway, thank you, everybody, again. And Steve, I'll meet with you anytime. And I'd welcome all of you to come along because I, I just am so excited by this project. And, you know, I don't really have a vested interest in whether it happens in the village or not. I love the village. I would like to see it there because I think it would be a small step for our frog house and a huge step for the village. But tomorrow I'm, I'm available whenever you want.
Well, we'll set this up offline. We don't need to go through this in the meeting, you know, because we have an agenda. I appreciate
It's time to end this discussion, Melissa. It's been a long session. Again, thank you so much.
Well, I think, I hope it's been helpful for people just to understand the process and, and what's involved. And that we all are very, very excited about the opportunity, you know, to do something really positive on it, on that land. So it's all good. So we have an action plan. So thanks, thanks, everybody for weighing in.
Yeah, Marg, real quick, Margot, tomorrow, let's not do tomorrow. It's supposed to be 20 something degrees, snow on the ground. It's going to be a mess.
Offload.
All right. I get ahold of you Friday and, and we'll take a walk over there. And whoever else would want to join, let me know.
Great, okay, okay, thanks so much. All righty. Now, let's
One, one last thing, sorry. Dorothea, when, when the meeting's over and you, and you end the Zoom meeting, a window should pop up with the text file that has all the chats in it? So maybe just circulate that to the trustees. Maybe there's some good ideas in there that we want to work on.
That would be great. And also if there's questions, maybe things we didn't cover, then we can get back to people as well. So thank you, thanks Dan for that. I appreciate it.
No problem. I just wanted to point it out to the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda, one day special events. This one is regarding the Pittsburgh Panthers.
Is that a non municipal use permit?
Yeah, I didn't see an application for this. I saw it was an agenda item, but maybe I didn't get the paperwork or something.
Actually, there's, I, there's no, there's no paperwork. It, this is a discussion Steve and I have been having with the mayor and Jeff Turner as to how to handle for their normal application. This has normally in the past gone to the planning and zoning board for a temporary zoning permit. And there is issues with doing that. So we kind of have a local law up next week and we're, I'm going to leave it right to Jeff and step out.
Thanks a bunch, Dorothea. Anyway, so we have on the, we have on the next meeting's agenda, public hearing for the temporary retail businesses that was crafted to replace the prior transient merchant, which was granted by the clerk. And we, we all, well, at least I thought, and the board at that time thought that that was really discretionary authority that the clerk should not have. So we have that coming up. I looked at it, it doesn't really seem to fit nicely with a charitable use. So I think if you were to add charitable use to that code, which you can do, because it would make it, it's not, it's less restrictive, not more, then that would address the Panther, the Pittsburgh Panther situation and any other kind of events that, that come up over the year. Lily mentioned this is a non municipal use permit. It is not because it's on the dairy property. So it has to be something else. And this seems like, seems like it'll fit if we just tweak the proposed retail business.
I'm sorry, Jeff, can, can you just tell, what is this event?
Baseball team, I think, gets sticky lipstick and sells it to people and makes money for their, their season, probably to go south to play.
Oh, great, thanks.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Piece of information you guys had that I just didn't know. So thank you.
Yeah, so it, it, I think they want to do it in May, so there'd be time.
Yeah, Lily.
Would, would there be a fee or a same situation as we would have for the hot dog gentleman? Where a certain amount of, of revenue comes to the village in the way, in lieu of taxes? Here's just a one day event and it's fundraising. And if you want to put it under, under the same heading as the, as the retail, whatever the new law is that we're considering next week, under, under that heading, it, would it still be subject to the same? I don't know what to call them, fees or?
The answer is, the answer is yes, but it would be the same fee that they have paid in years past for the non municipal use permit.
Just waive them.
No, I would, we wouldn't waive them because we have about a hundred dollars in publication expenses.
I think, okay.
So
The new, new local law requires a public hearing and the cost of posting a public hearing with the changes made and the DNC now handles the Brighton or the Pittsburgh Post, it's about a hundred dollars for a legal posting. So I would not suggest to the board to waive fees because you're going to be out that money.
And, and really, the, the discussions between Dorothea and Steve and the mayor and I at this point have been to hopefully work towards doing one day events administratively with the, the code enforcement guy. So that we avoid the public hearing. But I know that we're contemplating a, a code revision at some point in the not immediate, but near term future. And we would probably have something to propose at that point that would deal with the fact that, you know, maybe we're not going to get a, we'll waive a fee for a charity. We may not waive a fee for a, another event. But that's, that can all be dealt with. In order to get them in on the May 28th, I think, is, we have to squeeze them into this.
Yeah.
So essentially, my understanding is this is, you know, a way to support the Panthers because, you know, it's a short term opportunity to essentially, you know, wrap this in through a couple of lines in the law that's proposed, you know, going to hearing next week. And then down the road, you know, we really look more solidly at one day events like this. That's my understanding, that this is just sort of an interim step is the best way maybe to describe it. Am I correct?
That would be my understanding of what our intent.
Yeah, just to be able to, you know, make sure that the Panthers can hold their event. Any other comments from the board?
May I address the board?
Oh, hi, Justin Bleedstra. Yeah, can you address, you know, your, we've, we've the record, actually, we need to do that.
Sure, Justin Bleedstra, 19 Bouton Avenue. And I'm on the planning board and zoning board of appeals. And the Pittsburgh Panthers, the ZBA has always dealt with them under temporary permits. So you, we already have a temporary permits law that all these entities could apply under. So you, we already have a temporary permits law that all these entities could apply under, already exists for the ZBA. And I don't know why you're creating a second temporary permit law that's proposed. I know there's some loopholes in our temporary permits law, but you've already delegated this to the ZBA and then you're delegating it back to yourselves too. So you're creating two entities, I think, to handle temporary permits, which doesn't make any sense to me. But so my, again, I've made this suggestion before, how about we just fix our loopholes in our temporary permits code? And the law that you've proposed, I hadn't heard whether this is a zoning law or not. It sounds like it's a zoning law. I hadn't seen a seeker notice for it yet, if you're talking about having it next week. So I, I'm not sure what you're doing with that law, but it seems like some administrative steps are being, might be being skipped.
Jeff, would you like to speak to that, please? Thank you, Justin.
The whole reason I think that we're doing this law is because my understanding was that the planning board didn't think that this stuff would fit in the temporary permit. And this is not being done in the zoning law.
I think where it is in the code, so you're saying that where you stick it in the code determines whether it's a zoning law or not? Not whether it regulates land use?
I'm not saying that at all. You asked, is this being done in the zoning? And I said, my answer was no.
And my understanding.
And, and the board will be doing seeker and there's no other involved agencies. So we're out of the 30-day window.
Okay. Any other comments from the?
Can I ask you a question as to what Pittsburgh Panthers are doing and on what property?
My understanding, it's a fundraiser to be held on the dairy that they do every year.
I think it's barbecue.
Yeah, it's a barbecue.
Yeah, and I haven't looked at the, at the code in relation to that, but that had always come before the ZBA as a temporary use permit in the past. The only, I think the concerns that we had with some of these things is the code doesn't allow for outdoor dining areas, which I think applied to Harladae. I'm not sure there's any issue with the Pittsburgh Panthers just applying for a temporary permit as they always have.
It's, it's at the dairy. It's on, I'm sorry, I'm not, I, I don't, somebody else help me with this. I'm not understanding really what, what you're aiming towards here, Justin.
I'm not sure there's any reason a law needs to be adopted to handle the Pittsburgh Panthers. It's on private property. We have a temporary permit system in place to do that. We've dealt with them before. I think the only areas where we started getting some more concern was when it's actually sit-down dining establishments, because we have code that regulates outdoor dining areas and it puts in a bunch of regulations. So that was an issue with Harladae. I'm not sure if that's an issue with the Panthers. Again, I don't know what they're proposing, but we'd always handled them properly before, and I don't know if there's anything in the current zoning code that precludes us from handling them as we've done before.
Oh, trustee Lycov, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, Justin Vlestra, as well for your comments. I believe that I was on the zoning board of appeals when we reviewed the application in the past and it didn't seem to be particularly problematic. I have some hesitations about deferring this and making it contingent on a law that we might or might not pass if they're looking to get this done. And I, if, if the timeline works out, there's not even a date for the item in our agenda that I can see here, nor a place. There's really nothing in the packet other than it says, you know, it's a one-day item. So I don't really see anything that we could approve here. So if it fits into the schedule, I would just as soon defer it to the ZBA and let them handle it.
I mean, this was brought up as a topic for discussion. That was my understanding. Jeff, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, I don't think there was any intention to do anything this evening.
I think it was just.
And again, the only reason that we're talking about this at all is because we thought the planning board thought it didn't fit. The planning board thinks it's, it will fit and they, they can issue a temporary zoning permit. There's no need to make the changes we're talking about. That's my sole knowledge about why we're even contemplating this.
In my fix for the holiday hots thing, you could make a alternate code change to just fix regulation of outdoor dining areas. And then it would fit with under a temporary permit.
Okay. And Dan, did you have your hand up? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you did.
But Justin, I have a question.
Yeah, Renee.
Mayor Plummer, Justin Vlestra, you just said you don't see any issue why the planning board can't approve it like it did in other years. So, and Jeff just said he thought we were discussing it because the planning board or PZDA had an issue with this particular piece of code. But if Justin, the head of the planning board, is saying we can review this and give the permit just like previous years, then do we need to do anything?
If you're asking me, first of all, I don't, I haven't looked at this particular one. I think my recollection, and this, again, I haven't looked at any of this in well over a year because we haven't had any recent discussions with the trustees or building inspector about this. But there's just a couple sentences of code that were giving us an issue regarding Harladae hots. And I don't recall ever having an issue with Pittsburgh Panthers, but since I haven't looked at it, I can't comment definitively one way or the other. And that would be technically Steve's interpretation. So this is Steve's decision to make as to whether it's eligible for one and if that's the process. And then, so it's not mine. If it comes to us and we feel it doesn't meet the criteria for approving it, then that becomes an obstacle. So again, it would appreciate having an opportunity to, I think, talk about some of these issues with the trustees so we can actually sort out a proper solution. And, you know, as far as Harladae hots goes, I'm not sure why you need to do any, I'm not sure how you want to handle that, but if you just tell Steve, look, some code changes are coming. We're going to change it, change the laws to allow this. And then while the machinations of drafting those laws are in progress, you just direct Steve, hey, don't pursue any enforcement actions, allow Harley Hots to pursue this. I mean, I don't, that seems to me to be a plausible thing you could do rather than adopting a law, just withhold enforcement. And, you know, this would be something that Steve or Jeff could better speak to. But it just seems like we should fix the problem rather than coming up with a Band-Aid. We should actually do a more thorough discussion of it, is all I'm saying.
Interrupt you, but in the interest of time and moving the, the meeting along, it sounds like this could be addressed possibly in a workshop in some, you know, and maybe we can discuss this offline and maybe set up a workshop if there's some, you know, issues with the code that way, dealing with, for example, Harladae hots or how we move forward. I'm throwing that out for the board. Does that make sense? Because we still have agendas before us in this meeting. Thoughts? Anybody?
Yes, are you talking about temporary use permits, generally one-day event, that that's the issue? Not, not the Harley Day Hots, that's a separate, that's ongoing. Okay.
Exactly. So let's, let's maybe regroup, maybe it could be, you know, mini workshop where we just, you know, nail, nail down some of these issues and take a look at if there needs to be any kind of changes to the code going forward. Okay? So with that in mind, unless there's another thought on this topic, I'm going to move on. Okay, item number three, marijuana legalization and the phased-in impact for the village. This is something that Dorothea brought to my attention. You know, as you know, New York State is legalizing marijuana. And we have some background information. This item is just really a heads up for everybody about things that we're going to be taking a look at. And Dorothea, if you can just fill us in a little bit, you do have some information, I believe, from NICOM in your package. If you want to review that at some point, trustees. And we can also post additional information as it comes in on our website. But Dorothea, if you could just fill us in a little bit about what's coming down the pike?
Yeah, I attended an ICOM conference training seminar on the marijuana laws and what has changed. And the big thing is that they put forth is TBD to be decided. There is a lot of stuff coming up that hits not only HR for employee matters. It hits zoning, it hits sales, it hits homeowner use. It touches many aspects of the village in a whole, even down to policies on smoking on public lands and things like that. So what this really is, is a heads up to the board that we need to look at almost everything. And I would suggest that the board put a committee together and start dealing with each of these as they need to be phased in. I've reached out to our HR attorneys, started the look at our employee handbook. You know, our DPW, they're covered under federal because it's not allowed by federal. So they're still have to hold up that part, Zach could touch on that if he needed to. But it does touch everything and impact everything. And talking with Jeff, I think you agree with me, Jeff, that this is something that does need to be reviewed by the board as it comes up, before, even before it comes up.
Yeah, and, yeah, Jeff, if you could continue, because Jeff was making me aware as well that there's a timeline for some decisions that have to be made before the end of this, of the year. So if you could speak to that maybe just briefly.
So the, the one thing that has to be dealt with in the immediate future is whether or not the village wants to opt out of the retail aspect of this. And because if you want to opt out, you got one shot at it. If you do not opt out before December 31st of 2021, you never get to opt out. You can always opt back in. You can never opt out. And depending on how it's structured, you could always, if you, if you decided to opt out, it would have to be by local law. That's one option, which is subject to a permissive referendum, which is a, usually has a 45-day window. So if you add on the 45 days and you add on the public hearing, publication notice requirement, you are into kind of a, a quick turnaround to make this decision. The other piece that you could, I mean, you could leave this with the public and do a mandatory referendum and not make it subject to a permissive, but then that's, you know, a policy decision for the board. But that's the timeframe of immediate concern.
Okay. And, and also with the mandatory referendum, you know, there's obviously costs associated with that as well.
And permissive, both.
Right.
Anytime you hold a referendum, I think, Dorothea, about a thousand bucks?
I would say close to, because you, it's just like an election. You'd have to have the election inspectors and the machines. You know, it, it's the full course. It's just like an election. Unless you tie it to an election. We don't have an election coming up in this year, so we would have to, so I wouldn't say, you know, it's benefit for the board to pass the law and it comes up in the March election. We're not having a March election. We don't have anybody up, so.
And that wouldn't, that would not meet the timeframe required to opt out either.
Right. No, right. No, it's just timing. But I'll be happy. I have other handouts from NICOM. They also sent me the link. If someone wants to sit in and watch the class I watched, I highly suggest it because it does, like I said, it impacts a lot more than you would think off the top of your head.
Great, yeah. Lily?
Thank you. Thank you. Is it, is this video or information that meant for municipalities only? Or can we put it up on our website for everyone to watch if they have questions?
I, that's a good question. It's coming from NICOM and I would guess it's on their website. I don't know if it's one of those, we, you have to be a member to watch. I would, it only, I, I could look at that further and see if it can be made to.
Or if there is something else available through another resource, so, you know, the public can be educated. That's a great idea, Lily. And also I think, no matter what, I think very quickly, you know, maybe even in May, we should pull things together. I know, you know, you had recommended that we need a committee to kind of really look at all these different aspects. But I think it's important also that we hold a public forum in some fashion because this affects our village. I mean, this is a big deal. So I think we should all really be thinking about that and how we move forward with that as well.
Absolutely. It, like I said, it hits so many different aspects. The reason I suggest the committee is just because even in the municipality, we have, every piece needs to be looked at.
Right. And just as, just a quick aside, I did speak with Bill Smith today. And, you know, the town is really looking at the same things. And he's really interested in, you know, and I am too. And, you know, looking at what the town's doing and he wants to know what the village is doing because obviously it's kind of all one big Pittsburgh. So we also were thinking of maybe as we get further along a little bit of doing even a joint forum as well between the town and the village. Because it's, it's all cross-pollinated really. So, yeah. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Who was?
That's right. It was me again.
Yes.
It would be great if the town would do it first and then we could see how it works for them. You know? Because we're so much, we're so much smaller and it affects us so much more profoundly because we're so small. But if it, it happens in the town and, you know, whatever, if it works out, great. And then we can follow along. Let them.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's interesting, although you know what's interesting about the town as well, and Bill brought this up. And the town really has very discreet retail areas, you know? Whereas the village is, it's all intertwined in our village. So I think for us, it's actually, we, we might have to do kind of a deeper dive. You know, we have Pittsburgh Plaza in the town, you know, there's sort of just very specific areas. And, you know, I think our issues might be a little more, even more complicated. But maybe, you know, the town going first. But either way, we have, I, I think it's important we have the public forum. Yeah. Regardless. Any other thoughts from people? Yes, Renee?
Dorothea, you're going to send that around to those of us who want to watch it and then let us know if that's, we can post it on our website or for the public in general.
Yeah, I will, I will reach out to NICOM because sometimes some things are member-only and this and that. And they, I'm, not that there's anything in there I don't think the public should know. I mean, it's all in the local laws. It's just really discussion going back and forth from NICOM and officials as to their concerns and what's the best practices and what we need to look at. So like I said, I don't think it's a big issue, but I want to make sure I'm breaking some rule that I don't know about.
And then depending on what, what decisions we make, we'll have to also revisit our parts of our zoning code perhaps.
Yes, I believe you will have to.
Yeah, okay.
Very definitely. It impacts so many things. It's really, okay. Item number four, budget review. Yes, Jeff?
Just a couple of things really quick. I'll promise to be very quick. Renee and I kind of dived into the speed limit issue today. I'm not certain we're going to be able to go down to 20. My last direction from this board was to draft legislation establishing a village lot, village-wide, non-state road speed limit of 20. We could certainly do 25, but Renee and I are brainstorming if there's some way or other that we can try to make it 20. It doesn't look optimistic right now, but we're going to keep plugging away at it. I guess what my point is that I'm going to draft the legislation at 25 rather than a 20 and to have it ready for the board to review.
Thank you for that. Any other thoughts from the board? I mean, it's still better. It's still better at 25, you know?
Yeah.
Renee, yes?
I think the right call is the, is, I mean, that's the path of least resistance right now. So we can do a village-wide 25 because of the state vehicle traffic law. Right now, we can't go below 25. And then it'll be consistent if we get the, the state roads, if that state legislation comes through as well. So it does need to be 20 eventually, but. So it does need to be 20 eventually, but that's going to take a lot more work and we haven't quite figured out. So these can have, this can be an interim step, I think, I think we should adopt 25.
Right, because it's all going in the right direction that we've all, you know, been advocating for. And, you know, I don't know that we'll ever be going in the direction of, hey, what about raising it back to 35 or something? You know, I think this is, as you say, a good step. Well, great, thank you for the update. Okay, budget review, the item we've all been waiting for.
I don't think, I think Jeff's going to say, do you need me for this portion? And we're going to say, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Save me some breath there, Dan, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff.
Everybody have a good night.
Go out and build a snowman or something.
Yeah, no kidding.
Alisa, can I ask you, can I put an idea out on how to address the rest of the budget portion of this meeting? The things I was most interested in, there were a few action items that a couple of people were going to run with. I think, Alisa, you had one, and if I remember right, Justin, did you have one? You did too.
Yes.
Could we just start with those?
Sure, I think that makes sense, you know, because that's, those were sort of the open-ended things.
Yeah, that's why we had this meeting. I just don't want to go through the whole budget line by line. I wanted to hone in on those, those action.
I think if we asked somebody to raise their hand to go line by line, I don't think we'd see a hand. So, Justin, do you want to start with what you were following up on?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. Before we get into that, I just wanted to know, is everybody okay? Or does anybody want a five minute break before we, since we're coming up on two hours here? How does the group feel? I'm okay either way.
I'm good.
I stand up and move around when I need to.
Yeah.
Good, all right.
I fidget, okay, so, that's a good one though, thank you.
So let's jump into this, and so as Dan mentioned, I was tasked with looking at the overall budget and contemplating a possible increase. And as a little bit of context on this before we get into the spreadsheet that I put together, since I'm the new one on the board and I was coming into the, looking at this budget, the tentative budget that had already been prepared, my first thought was, well, you know, a 0% increase is a great thing, since we're not increasing taxes. But the cost of living is going up. And on a deeper dive, you can see that that certainly does impact many parts of the budget. We've got village trustee salaries that are going up, mayoral salary that's going up two and a half percent, retirement benefits that are going up, other labor costs and as well as our vendor costs that are all increasing. So given that, you know, the fact that we're not doing an increase really means that we're doing a decrease. You know, it really, to me, sent a message that in past years, we raised it too much and we're really giving a cut while other costs are increasing. And that's one hypothesis that, you know, we can put forward, that we increased too much before and we're doing okay. So I wanted to test that. And basically, you know, I wanted to take a different lens on the budget and say, well, you know, based on other groups that weigh in on fiscal responsibility of the village, let's take the New York State Comptroller. What do they think about the amount of reserves that we have in the unrestricted fund as a percentage of appropriations or of a percentage of the total spend? And so with that, I'm going to share a link here to the group and maybe the public can follow along. I hope that works, somebody can click on it, we can see if anybody jumps in there and give us a thumbs up if that works. Would I be able to share my screen as well? Dorothea, could you give me permission for that? Seems to be created out on my screen at the moment.
I can do that, Dorothea, real quick. Okay, I just made you presenter.
Okay, and I can see that, I think, getting there, okay, so Google Sheets.
And Justin, I see where you're going with this, that the question is going to be, how is it progressing? Because over the last few years, we've been slowly building up the contingency fund. And it may take another few years to get it to a perfect place.
Absolutely, yeah, so let's, I agree that that's the question. So that's what I tried to hone in on here. And first of all, you know, since I'm new to this, I want to understand what the recommendations are for the unrestricted funds. So the unallocated money that, you know, we could dip into if other expenses are not properly forecast. And we actually have a village fund balance policy, which was done in 2016 and then modified very slightly in 2020. So I'm sure that most of this board is aware of it. And I believe that actually Mayor Plummer helped to draft this back in 2016. So I appreciate her work there because it really helped me to develop and hone the lenses that I'm using here. So that pulls from the New York State Comptroller, which says that we should, they recommend that we maintain two months of general fund operating expenditures in the unrestricted fund, so that's 16.67%. And they further go on to say that the, for villages, the threshold for low available fund balance is defined in the Fiscal Trust Monitoring System as less than 10% of expenditures. So that's the amount that we want to stay above, right? That's the way that I'm understanding it. And per the policy that we adopted, we need to retain a fund balance in the range of 10 to 15% of the most current year's budgeted appropriations. And if we fall below 10% at any given time, so even during the year, we've got to take corrective action to bring it back up. So we've got to make a plan to, within at least five years, bring that back into the acceptable range. So right now, you can see here that based on not increasing taxes, the percent of appropriations I calculate to be 11.21%. So we're down at the bottom of the range and of the 10 to 15% range. And to me, when I look at that, it's kind of, I'm sure that there are other lenses to look at this and it's got to be interpreted from a local perspective. But to me, that doesn't really sit well as, you know, hey, we're actually doing the responsible thing by not doing a cost of living increase. You know, it's just my first blush at looking at this budget. I did go down and I said, well, okay, so let's say that we want to bring the unrestricted fund balance back up to about 15%. So, you know, not quite the 16.67% from the New York State Comptroller, but let's say 15% to make sure that we sit, you know, well in that range. And let's try to do that over the next three years. Our fund balance policy says we've got five years to do it. Let's be a little more aggressive even, and just for the sake of exercise, say that we're going to do it in three adjustment periods. So how does that play out? Well, if we go over to the Forecast tab here, this is where I tried to see what a tax increase would do in terms of, over that period of the three years we specified, and we can play with these parameters. How is that going to get us up into the acceptable range or the acceptable target of 15%? Okay, any questions here so far, or can I just jump in if?
Nope.
Okay, great, thanks. So what I find out here is that if we target 15%, say that's where we want to be ideally, we give ourselves three years to get up there. And we, we go down this list here, if we bring it up to two and a half percent, that gets us in that range. That says if we do about the same thing, if appropriations stay about the same, and if we do that sort of increase in the next few years, then that brings us up to the 15%. And I also added a column here and I said, well, you know, certainly it's not our goal to make residents pay more. This is only part of the equation. And I know that this board has been very diligent about looking over costs and appropriations. But, you know, essentially, what's the impact if we do that two and a half percent? I calculated the average cost of a village parcel at about $280,000. That's on the previous figure sheet. If we do that, so based on that average value, we raise taxes two and a half percent, that would be $33.37 for the average.
I ask a quick question. So that the monies that would be collected due to this incremental increase would go exclusively into the reserve, the reserve fund balance? It would not be redirected towards paying down any other debt? Is that correct?
That was, that was my assumption here, and this is.
Okay, so it's only to go into the reserve fund, fund balance, not any other outstanding debt that we may be paying interest on, okay?
That was my assumption in making the spreadsheet, and this is what we would do.
I think if clarity for that from the CPA, I think we could do a designation for the repayment of the increase for fund balance. But typically, it's, the formula is whatever revenues hit versus expenses, the difference goes into fund balance in the end. But if you want something to go strictly to that, I think you have to appropriate that monies, the difference of that monies in here, but I'll have to clear that.
That's why.
Just to be 100%, yeah, I'm pretty sure, but I just would like to have it.
Okay, we need to follow up on that, thank you.
Yes.
Justin, can I just jump in with a question? And this might be a question for Mary, and I see where you're going with this, and thank you for putting it together, Justin. The question is how we use that contingency fund? And Mary, I'm asking you this because, you know, when I look at how you've done the budget, you know, there is some padding within the individual line items. You know, we have last year's, an estimate of last year's actual on, say, lighting or electricity or whatever it is. And then we make an estimate and we pad it a little bit within that line item. Do you ever, do you ever strip that line item to its core, to its essential, and take that padding and move it to the contingency fund? Like, what's the right way to do that? Mary, do you follow the question?
Sort of, only I also have a question for you, Dan. When you're talking about the contingency fund, are you referring to line item 1990.4 that says contingency? Or are you really referring to fund balance, which is 909, the difference at the end of the year? That would be my first question.
Good question, thank you, I'm really referring to, I'm going to put that question to Justin because which are you proposing that we grow to closer to the 16%? I want to get the, it's the unrestricted fund balance.
It's the 909 account is what Justin's talking about.
Yeah, essentially, and so that's on the figure sheet, and I've got two different numbers there. One is based on the estimate in, on 531 of this year. And the other one is the actual, which is the March 31st trial balance. And they're about the same, so it doesn't matter much.
So the question then, Mary, is, does it, is it a best practice or not to leave padding in the individual line items and move it to 909? Or do you want to leave them in the individual line items? What's the best way to do it?
Best way is to keep it a little bit padded into each account, into the line items, rather than having to pull out from fund balance. Because then you're saying, let me see, how can I put it differently? You've set aside one, pardon me?
No, that makes sense.
Okay.
But.
It's just that we don't want to hit that account, we don't need to. Otherwise, we're appropriating it, it's an amendment to the budget. This way, we already have it built in. We're trying to reflect things that we don't know in the future, like the increase in vendor costs. I mean, one vendor could not change the price of product and another one put up it by 10%. We have no idea, our usage to that particular line item could be different also. There's a lot of variables that take place. So I try to go by history and what we have, you know, planned out for the year that we know about at this time when I'm creating this budget. It's a gamble, it's looking into a crystal ball, it's trying to do my best guess, basically.
So, thank you, Mary, so the idea then is to perhaps take some of the wiggle room from some of the various line items, not all of it, just some of it, and move it to 909, and that kind of accomplishes a few different things. That gets us to that 16% or 15% or 14% even, without having to raise taxes. Because this is all the stuff we don't know.
Right, and it's complicated because there are also year-end adjustments that take place. Things like staff absences for, you know, benefit absences like vacation, that sort of thing. Due to, due froms that are also adjusted at the end of the year. We don't know that is above and beyond this. Typically, what happens is whatever the difference is, will go into 909 at the end of the year, whether it's a deficit and it takes away from, or if it's a surplus and it adds to. So the best thing is to try to maintain within the lines that we have established the budget in and/or below that, and that way we end up with a surplus, which then helps us to build that 909. That said, ideally, it would, for us, historically speaking, we should have an unreserved fund balance or the equivalent of a couple of months, two, three months worth of expenses of about $250,000 bottom line. So anything above and beyond that, you know, not too much, because then you're criticized again for having too much in there. Right now, we're sitting kind of on the plus, we're in an okay spot. I would like to be in a better spot than where we are, but we have a lot of, you know, heavy demands on our budget aside from just the operatives, the operating expenses, which is the litigation, debt repayment, those sort of things. And once those things are removed, then this budget then is more fluid, which has been in the past when I was here, but it's been very tight over the last few years.
Yeah, thanks, Mary, the, I guess what it comes down to for me is there, you're absolutely right. There's just some unknowns in a budget. And I don't want to treat those unknowns as if they're written in stone. When some of those unknowns, we could take 1% of the unknowns and allocate it to nine, the 909. Yeah, 909 and close the gap without having to do anything and probably see no difference in our lives.
You know, one thing I just want to say quickly also for people that are watching, and this is something that, you know, we're all on a learning curve here, I think, especially with the numbers. With municipal budgets, it's interesting because, and Mary, you just brought this up, and I think it's an important point. You have certain ranges and you want to have certain, say, reserves, and all good. But you can't be too low and you still can't be too high. That still means you're not in compliance with, you know, the comptroller's guidelines. So it's sort of like, you know, the porridge is too hot, too cold, it has to be just right. So I think that's important for people to understand that there's, I don't know, Mary, maybe you have a better word for it. There's sort of a range, but.
You have to hit a happy medium.
Yeah, you have to hit that happy medium somehow, and you never know when the comptroller's going to ding you. Ding you for too much or ding you for not enough, or, you know, all of that. So it's a little bit more unique with municipality, yes, Justin?
I don't want to say too much before Dan comes back, because I'd like to talk to him about this too. But following up on what you said, Alisa, there certainly is a range from what I'm figuring out, what I'm learning so far. We are at the bottom end of the range, we're close to the 10% where the comptroller dings you. That's what they tell us, from what I understand, and if there's other information, let me know. But I understand they flag you at 10%.
That's exactly what I said, yeah.
Yeah, and we're at 11.21, so without the increase. The, and so I understand what trustee heating is proposing, I believe, which is that we, we take money from other line items and we put them into the unrestricted fund. I am hesitant about that because we're not, our revenue is not increasing, our services are not increasing, and costs are going up. So where's that money going to come from? You know, to me.
We've cut some other things, oh, sorry.
Right, yeah, so I guess that's.
We cut in other places.
Yes, I'm glad that you came back in. So that would have to be the discussion, I guess. And, you know, I understand that we're, I've heard the past budget meetings, I've seen people pour over the line items diligently. I think the estimates are fairly accurate. There's one question that I had about legal fees and about the cost of the appeal. But that's only $25,000 either way, which doesn't make a huge impact on the numbers that I've prepared here.
Hey, Justin, before you get to that question, can I offer an idea? Justin, before before you get to that question, can I offer an idea?
Go for it.
Um, Mary, remember when we did that exercise, I don't know, a month or two ago during this process, where we had you flag the what we were calling fixed versus variable costs? And and really what it was was known versus unknown costs. Like, for example, a known cost was, hey, here's what the bond repayment is. We know to the penny what that's going to cost this year. And you had categorized each line item as we know exactly what this one's going to cost. And we think we know what this one's going to cost. We're making an educated guess. If you took, could you, I wonder if there's a good exercise that says, what would it look like if we took one percent from those unknowns? That we've made up the numbers anyway. We've made educated guesses. What if we took one percent? How much money is that? I have no idea. And that might solve the problem right there. Is that a worthwhile exercise to look at?
Dan, I'm thinking not really, and I'm sorry to kind of squish your bubble there. Our numbers are so close. What if it swings the other way? Like, you know, what if it swings to fifteen percent and I've only booked for for five? Now I'm looking to amend the budget again from some other line item. I'm robbing Peter to pay Paul to try to make it work so that we don't have to go into other pockets of money that we barely have in this particular fund. So I I would rather, and it's just my personal, I will do whatever the board decides to do. But I would rather have the money in the line item than have to look for it throughout the budget and and try to compensate for it, you know, uh. It's a tough call. It's just a really tough call. And we're, as I'm looking through it myself here, I mean, I don't see any that I could really say, well, I could take out a thousand here or two thousand here or whatever. There really isn't that much room in any of it. Um, like, for instance, even engineering costs, let's go with that number. I've got five thousand dollars in there, I think. Um, so what if I took some money out of there? And then you have Scott Harder do something and his bill comes in for six thousand. Now I have to look for a thousand dollars just for that one particular thing from somewhere else in the budget that I may need it by the end of next year or I may not. I don't know. I mean, for me, the the, it's kind of a tough call. It really is. You know, it kind of just depends on how we roll, how we roll up.
Yeah, thank, excuse me, Renee has her hand up, just one quickly.
Just a quick question. I know we don't know the answer to this one yet, but we are expecting some funds from the the federal government. Um, I don't know what the parameters of of that will be, but some of that can be used for projects and road projects, whatever else. And that that's an unknown that.
Correct.
We are expecting something, um, this fiscal year, correct? So when that money comes in, will we have a chance to sit down and revisit the budget and and how that will, how those funds might.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. When I, when we were at a point where the budget was not balancing and in an effort to try to bring it down to a zero budget, uh, meaning no tax increase, we did go through and pull out a lot of the projects that we were considering uh, based on two criteria. One, the timing of of some of the things was just not going to work out for us in this early part of fiscal year, probably maybe net towards the end of the fiscal year, but not in the early. So we removed that. And the second part of it was, um, having money coming in from the American Recovery Act, uh, was a possibility to restore some of those budget line items when the money did come through. At this time, I do not have an idea of what that criteria is. Um, so therefore, I don't know where I can apply it to it. I'm guessing it'll be things like roadwork, infrastructure, that sort of thing. But I don't have that information just yet. And the other part of that is that I also don't have a dollar amount that would be allocated to us at this time. I tried to get that information. I don't have it at this, you know, they haven't shared that yet. Uh, we, the way this whole thing will work is the town will get the money and then we will get an allocation from the town for our portion of it. But that might not take place for us until, well, the money is supposed to start to roll out, what, in June? June and July. So we may not see it until the end of July or August or even September before we see it. When that money comes in, I will make a budget amendment to reflect that money coming in. And then, um, we can line up projects or whatever it is that the board is looking to do or how we want to spread it further criteria, because I will have to report how we use that money back to the government.
The only, the only useful information I have about that is the conversation I had with Bill Smith, who said that the town, um, has been notified that they're probably going to receive about three point two million. And so whatever our piece of that is, um, the understanding that they have at this point is that it's based on, uh, percentage of population for us. So we just don't, still don't know what that formula is exactly. But not three point two million, just so you know.
And that would be so nice. Solve all our problems.
Exactly.
The whole darn yard.
Yeah, yeah, but so that's.
We don't know what it will be. Yeah.
Yeah.
So we're about seven percent by population, right? About two thousand out of twenty seven thousand? I'm just doing back of the napkin.
Yeah, trying to back it out. I know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or I think our population is at fourteen hundred. And the other piece that I had heard, and I don't know if this is going to end up being the formula or not, someone had said it could be, um, seven times the allocation that we receive from AIM, which is also based on population. So seven times that amount would bring us between sixty and sixty five thousand dollars. The question I have, it is a two year payout, so I don't know if they're giving us sixty three, let's just say theoretically, sixty three thousand dollars each year or is it thirty thirty thousand, you know, sixty three thousand split twice? Um, I don't know. So I don't know what that amount of money is going to be. I don't know what the formula is and I don't have the criteria other than I know that it's going to be headed, you know, probably for infrastructure and roadwork. But I don't, until I get that, I'm kind of stuck in the mud. I've got all kinds of money that I can, I mean, all kinds of projects that I can use that money for. But, um, right now, I don't have any answers.
So what would you say, funding, it's directed funding potentially? It must be directed towards specifics, specific.
Right. Right. It'll be this specific, uh, projects that you're going to have to have it set for. I have to report that back. I know that much.
Yeah.
Which is like really not knowing a whole lot.
Okay.
It's just a tease out there.
Yep. Okay. So I'm sorry, Justin, we interrupted you with your presentation.
This has been great. I, um, I don't really have anything else left to present. Um, based on looking at the numbers, um, and I understand there's some, uh, question that that Mary would need to resolve about, uh, you know, whether this is achieved um, by padding other budget line items and then diverting back to the unrestricted fund balance or if it's done by directly depositing, um, any extra revenues into that fund. Um, but given that we're at the bottom of the range right now, uh, and we can't predict the future, we could spend more or less, um, but we've got increasing costs and, uh, we're at the bottom of the range. So I would not recommend keeping the revenue constant. I would increase, um, with a two and a half percent. Um, the tax increase would be thirty three dollars and thirty seven cents for the average household um, in order to, uh, work on restoring that fund balance back to the, more to the middle of the range over time. That would be my personal, um, my personal take on this, based on the analysis that I did. And I'm I'm the new one on the board. Um, I appreciate all the work that has been done. Um, and this is just my take on on looking at the numbers.
So, um, Dan, I have, I have a question for you, because you had presented the chart of the tax increases over the last, uh.
Yeah.
Twelve years. I'm trying to remember how many years.
Last fourteen, yeah.
And those those percentages, uh, were they around two point five percent or were some more and?
Here, I'll bring it up. I'll show it on the screen.
Because again. Does that take into account the many years that the board was flat with taxes?
Yeah.
Because there was a a good chunk of years that there was no tax increase. There was years that the money had been given back, you know, reduced. That sort of thing.
Here it is.
Okay.
So over the last five years, the average is a ten percent increase each year. Over the last ten years, the average increase has been seven point seven percent a year.
Dan, do you have the other half of that grid where it shows that there are years of flat, of no increase whatsoever?
Yeah, and they were more than fifteen years ago.
All right, but here's the the bottom line to that whole thing is that we're playing, we're playing catch up the entire time. You know, we're, and that that's hurting us in the long run. It's not really helping us.
Agreed.
And that and that's where where we're ending up having to do an eighteen percent tax increase or a twenty percent tax increase, because we're just not being able to meet the demands of the the budget that are required to operate the business. And, um, had we had throughout history, in my own time here, because this happened in my time, if the board had increased the budget just two percent throughout all those years, we would have been in a great place right now. But that hasn't taken place, because we've either had a zero increase in taxes or we re, or we reduce the taxes altogether to give back to the community. And what we did is really shoot ourselves in the foot, you know, so.
Yeah, and.
We're not, we're not in a good place.
Yeah, Mary, I totally, I totally hear you on that. The the challenge is it's been fourteen years in a row. And, um, the the big, the big part that wasn't in there was the legal fees. And and those have come back down to earth and.
But they're starting to come back. When I started, there was no litigation. And that's what's hurting us, is that we've had a lot of litigation out of eight, eight years out of the ten that you're you're referencing. So, you know, healthcare costs have gone way up too in that period also. That's another thing.
So it's a combination of things, but also, um, even with the increases that we're looking at um, on this particular chart, um, none of these increases went towards building up that reserve. They all went to their paid down debt, pay, pay for additional litigation. Am I understanding that correctly? So regardless.
I wouldn't say that. Mary, the question for you is, is our, is our reserve in better shape than it was in three, four, or five years ago?
No, it's in the worst shape ever. When I started here, our fund balance for the general fund was at six hundred fifty thousand dollars. It is now at a hundred eighty one thousand.
And there you go.
And that's mainly, because it's been drawn down because of litigation that had taken place.
Okay, yeah.
So I mean, we do, we do need to build that up. We need to do it prudently. I, you know, don't want to say that we need to kill the taxpayer with it, but we should at least stay on top of, uh, at least with inflation levels. You know, you're you're, um, having vendor costs that are rising. They're, you know, you go to Wedman's, you buy a gallon of milk for two ninety nine. Next year, it's three twenty nine. Your budget is set for two ninety nine. Now you're absorbing that cost from someplace. And that's the same thing throughout many of our vendors. I mean, some of them raise it two percent, some of them raise it fifteen. We're absorbing that cost for the same product, for the same service, expecting a different result, and it's not happening. We are going backwards and it's hurting us on the overall. The only way, you know, I mean, the things that would help us in this, in any of these budgets going forward is getting rid of all our debt, getting rid of the litigation aspect of it and trying to move forward with some good sound judgment going forward. We can't keep staying flat, having expenses go out of whack and expect to have a fund balance that is considered worthy of two months' worth of expenses. If the business collapsed and we had no money come in for two months' worth of expenses and the third month, we're closing up shop here. Village of Pittsburgh is gone. Because there's not anything to sustain, sustain you. We need money to sustain. And like I said, in that, that fund balance, I would like to see a balance of two hundred fifty thousand, which would be at least a, uh, an acceptable cushion going forward. But it's going to take a little while to get there.
Okay, Zach, Zach, did you have your hand up?
Hi, I was just hoping to add to this. Um, we have not been able to do a real road project besides Village Grove, which was funded through CHIPS funds, which is funds that we get from the state, um, in over three years, because the budget was not allowed. We are currently looking at the largest road in the village that is in desperate need. The three largest roads in the village are in desperate need of repairs. Not just patchwork, but a full on reconstruction paving job. Um, each one of those projects are going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, not prepared for. Every year that we we miss doing one of those roads kicks the can down the street on other roads that we are missing on. Not to mention all the drainage that seems to be failing at once too, which we aren't prepared for. Um, I just wanted to add that in there as a perspective for the failing infrastructure that we can't afford.
And just, and the equipment that we purchased, we purchased equipment through CHIPS because our budget wouldn't allow us to purchase it. When I started this twenty years ago, uh, we had money sufficient in there for a road project every year. For a drainage that was fifteen thousand, every year, no problem. We had money for equipment that we put in so that we could switch that out. Right now, we don't have it. I am looking to other revenue sources to look to see if we can possibly pull those funds in so that we can try and meet the needs of operating this business. And it's not saying that we're leaving here in a cushy place. It's embarrassing to some of us that, you know, honestly, I I shouldn't have to go through this. And we're trying to maintain, but it's, it's kind of.
Right, okay, so.
It's a challenge.
Yep, Justin, just before, just before I get to you, um, so the three major roads for people listening, uh, it's it's south, it's Sutherland and Shane. Correct, Zach?
Correct.
That you, yeah, and, um, CHIPS, I can't, what's the acronym for something highway improvement?
Consolidated Highway Improvement Program, and that only gives us about twenty thousand every year. The South Street project alone is going to be about two hundred fifty thousand.
Absolutely, so.
Right now, we don't even have enough fund balance to fund that project.
Right, but so so just for people listening, just so, because we're throwing around some acronyms and talking about stuff. I just want people to understand. Yes, Justin?
Uh, yeah, that clarification was was good. And and my understanding as someone new to this is that, uh, what perhaps we're saying uh, and and what Zach might be saying is that the line item for the road maintenance is is low. So if, and it's not allowing us to do certain things that we want to. So if we actually want a fairly budget for that, we're going to actually have to increase that amount, which, when you go back to my spreadsheet, that would basically increase appropriations and mean that we're actually farther from from that goal. Uh, so just to to kind of put that in context and and, um, explain how it how it fits in here, at least in my understanding.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Um, it seems like every year for the last three years or four years, and probably even before my time superintendent, that each line item is kind of being chewed down every year um, to a bare bone and absolutely get away with, and and that's it, type of of fun for it. Um, our wish list every year is not a wish list of things that we would like for improvements, but more of what is absolutely necessary.
Right.
Well, it's, it's just, you you keep operating like that and everything just starts to fail and everything becomes more and more expensive down the line or replaced.
Yeah, and I I agree with that. I've I've listened to previous budget processes and it, the entire spreadsheet and analysis that I did, that I did, uh, relies on a fair budgeting of each category. And if you're not fairly budgeting, if you're taking money from those categories or if you're under budgeting, um, then then things end up looking, looking worse and you end up drawing down the general fund, as I understand it, when you can't make ends meet, uh, in the particular line items.
Yeah, the challenge of this is we don't really know how accurate. Yeah, the challenge of this is we don't really know how accurate our budgeting is because we do the budget so far away from when we have actual numbers on the whole year. So that, we're flying blind in many ways. We've got about 60% of the data. It just makes, it makes it, hold on, let me finish, please. It, it makes it incredibly hard. Certain portion of what we are budgeting for is a guess. And we don't do any analysis, looking back over the last year. We never look at what did we budget at the beginning, and what did we actually end up at the, at the end of the fiscal year when the books were closed. We never learn from it. We never really get it, you know, better as a, as a board with doing it. So.
Lilly, you had your hand up?
I did. My question is a practical one. I'm wondering what our timeline is if we were to consider this change. What, what sort of a timeframe are we looking at?
We need to file this budget as a final budget, May 1 with the state.
Okay, so. We would need a public hearing, is that correct, in order to make any changes to the budget that we reviewed at our last meeting?
No, you've had your, you've had your budget hearing. Your point of your budget hearing is in case you need to make any changes from public input and in reviewing. So you can always go back and amend the numbers.
Does that include the 2.5 that, that Justin is proposing?
Yes, you could add the 2.5.
Okay, I see.
Zach, did you have your hand up, or were you just fidgeting?
Uh, no, my hand was not up.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay. No other thoughts? Lilly?
I would, I would just add that what Mary has pointed out is true. Given that the, all the years that I have, I have been present for these budget meetings, is that there was a lot of playing catch-up. And I think what Justin is proposing makes a lot of sense, and it is, shows a good deal of financial responsibility, and which is our, our job. And I would think that the, the least that we would want to do is to keep pace with cost of living. And that's not even, we're below. Cost of living, I think, is higher than 2.5 personally. And to at least do that, so that we're not, in three years, what was happening when I came on the board is that we were playing catch-up, and it was dreadfully uncomfortable. And we were talking about 5% and tearing our hair out over 5%, and then 6% and having, you know, meeting after meeting, talking, you know, long hours because we were put in this very difficult position. If, if the board 20 years ago had automatically almost kept pace with cost of living, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in currently. So that's what I want to say about that, and that's my opinion.
I think it's not just that. It's also that, and also, you know, as Mary, you said, the legal fees, you know, and we're also carrying an additional, additional debt. So it's multifactorial. Dan?
Yeah, so I, I want to address the issue of, of the idea that we're not keeping pace with cost of living, because we are, okay? Just because you're not raising taxes doesn't mean you're not keeping pace with the cost of living. We have allocated the money to keep pace with cost of living for all the increases for our staff, for all the increases of with our benefits. Because we're in a pandemic, and because of the year, decade of legal fees that we've had to pay, we've had to sacrifice doing some infrastructure projects because we just can't afford them. But we have absolutely, in this budget, accounted for cost of living increases. What we did instead was we, we, we cut to the bone on some other things. So I want to strike that idea that we haven't done a cost of living adjustment, because we absolutely have. If we had left those things in that we had to cut, you would see a much greater than the cost of living cost tax increase the way we have in the last 14 years.
Renee?
The other piece of this that we were going to discuss, and it's related, is making sure that the legal fees were where we think they should be, the estimates for the legal fees. And I know, I can't remember who was reaching out to Mindy. I think it was Mayor Plummer. Okay.
It was. Well, yeah, why don't I speak to that so we can have, you know, even a little bit more information for this picture? So I did speak with Mindy Zoglin, and I also spoke with Chuck Malcolm. Because with the line item, if you guys have the budget, it is, where am I here? Under Hodgson, it's a 1420.41. Just to refresh everybody, if you have, have the budget. And where was the line item for Mindy? Oh, it was 1420.403. Is that the right one? Do I have the right one? No, I don't. Where am I looking?
It's dot 402, right?
Thank you, sorry, missed it. There we go. So there was an estimate given for the same work by both firms. And one was from, about handling the LW, LWRP case, the appeal on that. And there was a range that was given to us from Hodgson Russ of between $7,500 to $10,000. And prior to my taking office, the board had looked at the $10,000 higher end of that range as a part of an item for the budget. And that would be in addition to the $20,000 for the two appeals to the recent court decision from PCP. So we're looking at $30,000 there. Just to remind you, so you, the previous board took the $10,000 estimate and plugged that into the budget. And the discussion from our last meeting was that for the same appeal, which is the one that you rejected in terms of the estimate from the Zoglin Group, was $35,000 for the appeal of the LWRP as a determination or a settlement. So on speaking, and they both, both firms really were substantive in their response to me. Mindy Zoglin really felt that because of the nature, how they derived this, they looked at what previous appeals had cost. So they derived that estimate of $35,000 from prior appeals. Mindy said that she felt that it was potentially at the higher end of an estimate. It certainly could be lower. But she always felt that she is, in terms of giving estimates to clients, would always err on the much higher side of things. And she referred us, and you can also refer to what has been spent to date. I think this is the 331, the, yeah, the March books from Mary. In terms of what has been set aside, again, Dan, this speaks to what you were saying about, you know, line items having more than maybe are being used. You can see that it's significantly lower still. We're not quite to the end of the year, but we don't really have a lot going on. So she was just saying it certainly could come in on the lower side. Okay, so with that being said, the, when I spoke with Chuck Malcolm, he really felt that, and I'm just going to look at my notes really quickly. He really felt that all of the main legal work really had been done, and that the appeals were nothing more in terms of their response at the appeal level of simply tweaking and tuning, because as we know, when you are working on an appeal, if you haven't filed the appeal, you, you do not pay for, what is it? To file the records for the appeal, which is a significant cost. So that would be the burden on PCP in this case, as they have filed the appeal. So it would not be a burden on the village. And also, they really felt that it was, the appeals would actually be quite straightforward because there was such significant and technical and fine groundwork done in the writings. So he felt, they felt really comfortable with this addition of the $7,500 to $10,000. So that's the upshot of the conversations with both of them. I respect both of them for how they thought through it. I think, you know, again, I just put this back as information. Bring this back to the board.
Thanks, Elisa. The, the question I have for you, you said $7,500 to $10,000?
Yes.
Okay, and the number I'm looking at shows, if I'm looking at the right line item, it's 41, so it's, it's 30 in there.
That's $10,000 on top of the $20,000 that they have already, for the, the other two appeals to be filed again. Yeah, so, yeah.
So the 30 is accurate?
Right, the 30 is, is accurate when you combine the two.
And this year, I think we're going to do a little over 20 with them, when all is said and done. So it does have cushion over this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it still does, exactly. Yeah, that's a good point.
And from what you said about your discussion with Mindy, though, it sounds like we might be a little low. You said that she thought we could come in low, but we're at 15 for that. Her high end was 35 after your confession with her. Do you, are you still comfortable with that 15?
Well, her high, no, she was saying, in other words, she's, she felt in her experience with the applicant in the past that sometimes there can be curveballs. The response from Hodgson Russ was there's no room for a curveball anymore because of the nature of the decisions rendered. And they, they felt that the, the appeal, you know, we, there was strength on their side for the appeal, that there wouldn't be a lot of time and, and money, monies involved. I think, you know, Mindy was being just, I think, a little more, what's the, you know, she's just, what's the word? You know, erring on the side of caution, I think, you know, and she used those words with me. Yes, Justin?
First of all, thank you very much for following up in, in such detail with the, the two attorneys. It sounds like this is really great information. I, I guess the, the comptroller, from my recollection of the report, zapped us before for under budgeting for litigation expenses. So based on that, my inclination would be to go with the, the estimate that might be erring on the side of caution, which is the higher one. Also, it appears to me that the, the boards, the, the PCBA and the HBB are both independent boards. And I, maybe I'm missing something, but I don't think that we can just be taking the, we can't be prescribing the legal counsel to them. They would be the ones to, to make that decision, and I just want to be respectful of, of those boundaries. But maybe I'm missing something. That's just my, my two cents.
Justin?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, are you talking about the regular business? Because they, I did, I do believe that the boards were consulted, as well as the attorneys, on the regular business and the LWRP, what else do we have? Whatever the remaining litigation is. And Lilly or Dan, you were in those meetings, so you probably remember that as well. So I think that those boards were consulted for that, or just their attorneys?
That's, that's my question, yeah. I, I think, I, I don't know. If, if they, if the, if the PCBA signed off on having Hodgson Russ represent them, that's all good. But if they didn't, then I, I think we want to tread carefully.
Hodgson Russ isn't representing PCBA.
No, not in that manner, but, but Hodgson Russ was representing the Historic Preservation Board. And also Chuck Malcolm made a point of saying that they actually, he wrote the, the attorneys were asked to write the, the decision that Judge Ark quote should make to make the case. And when Judge Ark rendered that decision in December, supporting and upholding both boards, that decision had been written by Chuck Malcolm of Hodgson Russ. So there was, I would say, collaboration between, Lilly, maybe you have some thoughts on that, because, you know, you were on the board at the time. But, you know, this is what was conveyed to me by Mr. Malcolm.
That's correct, that it was, it was decided that the most expedient way forward was that Chuck Malcolm and Mindy Zoglin would work together. And that, and to that end, it was very successful. And Chuck Malcolm wrote the findings, and the judge used those very findings, included them in his decision. So that's how precisely written and how highly he thought of those findings. So I think he's quite confident that, that in the appeal would be go in our favor tonight because of, of those findings that the judge used in the decision.
And, and just for the record, both firms, when I spoke with them, spoke very highly of the other one. You know, they're very collegial, everybody works well together. So I think it's really, again, I bring it back to the board for a discussion and for, you know, what your discretion is in this matter.
Real quick, sorry, I'm eating. Justin, to your point on that, it, it's a really good point about the comptroller and the legal fees. It's also important to remember that that was at a time where it was going at a much higher rate than right now, and it was off by, you know, more than 2X. In, in truth, we shouldn't, there's no active litigation, there is no active application. And you could, you could honestly, I'm not suggesting we do this. You could honestly make an argument that we shouldn't have anything in a budget of something that may or may not happen. But I'm not advocating for that because we all have common sense that says that we should have something in there to handle that. And so we already do, is, is the point. We've already accounted for that. We could easily justify these numbers to a comptroller, saying there's no application, there's no pending litigation, and still we've got, you know, more than $50,000 in cushion in there to account for a rainy day. I think they'd be quite happy with that.
And, you know, Hodgson Russ, you know, to that end, Chuck Malcolm said, you know, he really is echoing essentially what Dan just said, you know, things are tamped down at this point. And they just said, you know, we're, we're standing back and awaiting any direction, if any, from this board as needed. I mean, they don't see, at this point, any need for, you know, extremely active engagement, engagement. Because frankly, my understanding is, and again, you know, prior board members can help me out on this, it's really up to PCP at this point, you know, do they want to come back with it, with something else? It's their move, really. It's not in our hands. Okay, Lilly, you're nodding yes. I mean, I'm thinking that's how it was left.
I think that is, that is an accurate assessment. The ball is in their court, whatever euphemism you would like to use, we're awaiting. They, they know everything that, that is expected from the judge laid right out. And the both of the, all of the boards wrote a very clear, concise letter to the applicant explaining their position. And so they have all of the information that they need to, to move forward, and we're just awaiting their move, their, their application, their amendment to their application, and take it to the HBB and the PCBA and move forward. And that's what we're waiting for.
Yeah, that's, I'm right there with you. Yeah, Justin, did you have your hand up, or?
Yeah, I agree with, with Dan's points that, you know, this, this does seem to be wrapping up, and the, and the costs are less. And, and I, I agree with those. You know, we do still have two notices of appeal that have been filed, as far as I know, for the HBB and the PCBA cases. So I think we're, it's appropriate that we budget for something there. And so we're really talking, it sounds like, about, you know, $25,000 or something. Just as a piece of context on the spreadsheet that I prepared, the $25,000 doesn't make a difference in terms of the forecast. So whether or not we include it, you know, I tend to think we should include it. Other people may disagree. It doesn't really make a difference. If we agree that we want to shoot towards the 15% over the course of three years, the, the suggestions would still be the same to follow that.
Well, just getting back very specifically to these line items for the legal fees as forecasted, do we want to make any changes, or do we feel that, you know, regardless of the outcome, we are covered either way? Lilly?
Yeah, sorry. Thank you. Given the history, I have to agree with Chuck Malcolm in that the history has been to expect the unexpected. And I think we need to look at the history and, and acknowledge it. I, you know, we hope that we're wrong, but really, we've got almost a 10-year history here, and it's been quite consistent. So I think that what our attorney has indicated, I would heed it. That's my opinion. So I think that what our attorney has indicated, I would heed it. That's my opinion.
Well, that actually, that comment came from Mindy, not from Chuck. Yeah, but I mean, I think, I think both attorneys probably would agree, but they just came up with different estimates. But again, I think either way, we have things covered. I don't know if there's any significant changes we want to make. That's what I'm asking this board. Or do we move on? This is only about the legal fees at this point.
Just about the legal fees, I would, I would agree that I feel comfortable at the present, not at the present level. I feel comfortable with that.
I do as well.
Okay, okay. And I'm sorry, Renee?
I'm comfortable with them. Thank you for checking with those two unknowns, just to make sure we were covered.
Okay, and Justin?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm fine going along with the other opinions that have been expressed here on that one. I don't think it's a huge deal breaker either way, and I appreciate your diligence in following up with the two sets of attorneys, Lisa.
Okay, yeah, I'm in agreement. I think we have coverage. It could, you know, be that we don't expend all of it and we can make decisions about that, but at least we know we have it in there, and I think that's important. Okay, so where are we now? Do we circle back? Do we circle back to, yes, Mary? Yes.
Sorry, I had to unmute. I just have a couple, one statement and a couple little minor changes, if I can get that from the board. Off the first set of, first page, under the clerks, we've got account number fourteen ten point four oh eight for newsletters. Currently, there is no budget in there for that, and I know there's been some discussion. It's on page one.
Yeah.
Towards the bottom. All right, so right now, there is fourteen ten point four oh eight has zero budget in there. I know there's been some discussions about having a newsletter source and maybe having it printed or whatever. But in any case, there's no money now, and I was maybe suggesting, depending on how the board wants to go with this, put a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars in here, something to cover possible expenses.
What does it cost to send out a newsletter? Like mail it? What was the cost? Do we know roughly?
That goes back to Paula Sherwood's time when she was here, and that was, that was a few hundred dollars every time we did have it mailed out. Well, plus five hundred, plus postage, you know, including postage. So I don't know what a right figure might be in here. I don't know if you wanted to stay digital. The ten eighty, though. Go ahead.
One second, Lily, you, Lily, you have something to say? I saw a few fingers go up there.
Those prices are eight years old, so you have to, you know, consider the cost of everything going up. So I would probably triple that. Yeah.
Were you saying double it?
Triple it.
Yeah, triple it.
And so you're thinking, send that to every house, even though most people read them on?
Here was the other thing, also, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with hearing, but I hope I'm not chucking over anyone. Also, when Paula did it, she did it in-house, meaning herself, and she printed them off herself. And so we didn't have that cost. She was like, a lot of it was almost hand drawn, and she'd type it up. It was very loving hands at home. It was adorable, but, you know, things have changed since then.
I remember having it taken to Pittsburgh Printing or something.
Yes, exactly.
There was the cost that I was thinking about.
Exactly, much more money.
Yep. So if the board is in agreement in putting some money into this category, what money would you like to have put in there?
Well, Renee, you had a comment, Renee?
I was just wondering what the value is. And I know the town sends out paper newsletters, and I know there are people in the village who don't look, who aren't online. I just wondered if it's worth the expense. You know, I get the ones from the town, and they're the exact same thing I got sent via email, so I don't even read the paper copy. I don't know what other thoughts are. I also don't want to, you know, discriminate against people who don't have the internet.
Right, and then, Dorothea, we have, what, five hundred people signed up at this point?
Yeah, our email list includes right now a little over five hundred vendors. And I would say, right now, with the constant contact count that we have set up, we're averaging, it's costing us forty dollars a month for the village e-newsletters. So if we are going to continue that, we should put that under that newsletter line.
Right.
Yeah. Running that, it's four hundred and eighty dollars for the year just for constant contact.
There goes the five hundred.
Yeah. I know how to spend money.
You too, well done.
All right, so.
Where else is that reflected in the budget? Because you might have it reflected somewhere else.
I have to take it out of the contingency, which is the only place right now that I can, it's not, it's not recognized for a particular purpose. So I can move however much money you want to throw into this category from that one. So you just can give me that number.
Well, first of all, we only need the five hundred just for our, you know, our e-newsletter. We know we need that, and it should be in that line because it is reflecting the true way that we're using those funds, right?
Yeah, correct.
I agree.
Let's start there. Okay.
So five hundred.
Right, and then, you know, I mean, I read everything online, and I know there are people who don't. I don't know that we do need to, Renee, that you raised a good point, do we need to mail to every household? I mean, if, one thought for me, but it wouldn't work out, is when we mail out the sewer bill to put something in so people can sign up, you know, let them know, or say they want to receive it at home, you know, in the mail. But the problem is, the sewer bill's a postcard, so.
Correct, that was the point I was going to make.
Yeah, no. So how do we reach out, you know, and maybe for now, do we just print out what we, some copies for what we have online and try to distribute them to people that, you know, leave them? I don't know. I'm throwing this out, I don't know.
Hey, guys, I'm sorry to do this. I have to run. I really just want to make, I'm sure we're going to talk about taxes at the next meeting, too. I do just want to leave on a plea to this board that, you know, most families did not see raise in the last year. And and we hit them with an eighteen percent increase last year because we had significant revenue cuts because of sales tax. And we did the right thing then. We had to do it, and there's all sorts of information out there about why we had to do it last year. But I just can't see how we can, we can raise their taxes again during this time when we know we're going to get some money from the government and can use that for the things that we need. And we've already accounted for cost of living increases for the, for all of the categories. Every budget line item has cost of living on here. And this has to, you know, any way you look at, the way we've raised taxes, it's been enormous and has leapfrogged many times over the cost of living. And I just can't sign off when we've already got a budget written that accounts for all the things that we need. I can't sign off on any kind of tax increase this year. Thanks.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you. Good points. Yep, Dorothea?
If I can, on the newsletters, maybe right now, it might be difficult to do a mailing, but maybe if we leave copies of our newsletter at the library, at the town hall, have them at the village office when people come in, we could just take over copies and have extra until we figure out what we want to do on a mailing because of the cost in hand.
Yeah, that's at least, you know, it's helpful, for sure.
It's outreach.
Have we thought about reaching out to the town? The town puts one out regularly and letting us have at least like a little little section at the bottom for if you're receiving this in the village, I don't know, it'll go to everybody, but maybe we could put a little message at the bottom. I don't know, that's crazy.
It's going to every household in the town, too, you know.
Yeah, and you probably get people signing up that aren't, and we don't want to have to check who's a resident. Yeah, no, never mind.
No, I understand where you're going with it because it's a full mailing. I get that, you know. Well, I mean, I certainly think we need, you know, the five hundred, definitely. I mean, I support that. Any other thoughts from the board?
Well, we're already, we know we're spending that, and we know.
Yeah, I would suggest at least six hundred there in case there's a price increase.
There we go. That's true.
Can I really quick?
All right.
Maybe we could reach out to the town and see if they could, I know how often their newsletter comes out, but maybe they'd be willing to put like a village page on there, a village up and comings, and then maybe we could share a portion of that cost, and that would save our overall cost.
Yeah, I say let's explore all of it, you know, I'm all up for that. But, you know, at least right now, you know, the six hundred, you're right, you know, in case of cost increase, for sure. It'll come from the contingency, and it's going to be in the correct line because now it is a newsletter, and it just happens to be electronic. So.
I would support that. Does that need to be a motion?
Or do we just do that, Mary? Are we just talking about as part of the budget?
Yes, we're just doing it as part of the budget.
Okay.
All right, so I will put six hundred in there, so you have something. I have another same sort of scenario, and that is on the next page, under fourteen ten point forty-two, advertising. A year prior, we spent twenty-seven hundred. This year to date, we're at forty-seven hundred. I budgeted three thousand, thinking that number would be somewhere close to this three thousand. But our advertising is now being picked up by the DNC. So our legal, so our legal costs, you know, our legal ads are costing us more. So I was suggesting in increasing this by two thousand, so making that five thousand instead of three thousand to help defer some of that cost. I don't know what the right number would be. Because this, the changeover took place only maybe, I don't know, November, December?
It's been the last two, three months that we've seen that increase. I have spoken to Steve. We are looking at our fee schedule to make sure the charges for people that are going to require a legal posting is covering the cost of the legal posting. Because that is a huge increase and a burden on us.
Yeah, so.
Can you, just for people listening in, can you just remind us all what those costs are every time we do a posting? So a residence?
When we do a public hearing notice or a notice in the paper for the public to attend with a, it all stems from a legal notice, like your local law posting that went out for the local law next meeting. There is a charge of that. We used to go through the Brighton, or Brighton Pittsburgh Post, if I'm saying that right or? I think I'm getting the name right. It wasn't, it was like fifty, sixty dollars, Mary, does that sound about right?
Correct, yeah. It was minimal, basically.
Yep, and now we're seeing it almost ninety to a hundred dollars. So it's been a significant increase.
Yeah, on a percentage basis, that's big.
It is, and that's because the Brighton Pittsburgh Post now has the DNC running that part of their business, or they were bought by them and they handled the legal thing. And if we, you know, we just for the sake of looking, we looked at the DNC for doing our advertising thing, and they're already doing it. Maybe that would give us quicker response and, you know, move our meetings along faster with legal postings. It's about seven hundred dollars to do a legal posting with the DNC directly. So we are seeing the cheaper option. It's just more than we were paying all along.
So that's important, not only, you know, with the Post, then it's more costly than it used to be, still cheaper than the DNC. But the issue for us when we're scheduling things is the lead time required for the Post to be able to publish it. So that's another factor for people who are applicants. Okay.
Yep, and that's why we give the timeframe we do for those legal postings.
Okay. Okay. What else?
So all that said, I don't know what the right number is because we haven't had a significant history on that. I was suggesting maybe five thousand. I don't know. What do you feel about that, Dorothea? Given that you're working with, you know, legal ads mostly.
I think that's a good start, and I think what we need to do is being responsible when we go to do a legal posting or we're doing anything that's going to cost us money is we're being smart about how we're posting. And if we can combine postings or do something different, we can look and explore on those.
Right, and that, we can always charge back some of this, but not the majority of things.
Right, and that's why I'm hoping we can recover at least the portion that is spurned by building permit applications and all that and in the village board, and we don't have a ton of local laws and things going forward. If we're doing local laws, we do groups, and that saves the individual postings. So I'm just saying, little bit use of the brain along with smarts, we could, might, probably would be okay with five thousand. It gives us a starting point.
Okay. Justin?
Yes, I think it's, I appreciate the staff's, Dorothea and Mary's recommendations, just being inclined to go with those.
Yep, I'm comfortable with that as well. Okay, let's put that in. Mary, what else?
Okay. On page four, down to nineteen ninety point four, the contingency account. So that's where I stuck the other six hundred dollars from last week. So now I'm taking that six hundred dollars out to put it to newsletters, and I'm reducing this again by another two thousand dollars for the legal ads. So that'll read at twenty-eight oh seventy-nine. That's the other half of it, so I'm not adjusting the budget on the overall. That's all I need to say about that. And on the list, onto page eleven, which is the revenue page, I'm just making a general statement here, just so for the newbies on the board. The one, the one revenue that I can tell you we will have one hundred percent, whatever I put down on paper is one hundred percent what we will receive, is the real estate, real property taxes. Any other revenue on here is all a fluctuation. Monroe County sales tax is our best guess. We're still under pandemic rules. As you see in the twenty nineteen twenty column, it had five hundred eighty-one thousand five hundred. We're a far cry from that. At this point, on my guesstimate alone, it should probably be closer to six hundred ten thousand. So I'm still keeping that twenty percent margin, so to speak. And the fees, basically, like a building, building permits, zoning fees, that's all application driven. So if we don't have them come forward, this money doesn't come in. So I'm just saying, loosely speaking, we're riding on a prayer, because the one thing I can tell the board is, whatever we have on expenses, we will spend that and then some, but we don't have the revenues to cover it. So, I mean, right now, they're equal. But if something shifts, it's not going to come in the way that we're planning. That could present a problem for us. It can set us up for a deficit. So that's just another point to consider if you're considering a tax increase or not. The government stuff, the CHIPS money on three five oh one. I pulled twenty-five thousand, which is offsetting the South Street design. I did hear from CHIPS. We do have that and a little bit more money in our bank for next year. So if the project itself, the design were cost a little bit more, I could, I still have a little bit of pocket to be able to access funds there. Mortgage tax, I kept it the same because it's, that's historically speaking, we have been at this number forever. I think it's about twenty, about twenty-five houses sell out, exchange hands every year. So that's, that's sort of a given. And then the AIM money, New York State AIM three oh oh one, that's the ninety-three hundred that I had said we would receive. And that is also the same formula that the American Rescue Plan is supposed to be based on. And if we get seven times this number, it's a big if, we don't know that just yet, that will help us. But I just wanted to point out, basically, that all of the revenues listed all of the revenues listed here are all volatile other than the one for taxes, which I know I will get back. It, it's 100% on paper here and 100% collected by the end of next year. So.
Okay, so just getting back to page 11, you know, on the revenues, I do see that essentially you have reflected by adjusting a lot of the numbers slightly downward, you know, understanding, you know, sort of coming out of the pandemic. Am I correct that that's?
Yes.
Up behind it.
Yeah, we, right. Last year we dramatically dropped them.
Yeah.
Because we really didn't know what people would do and how they would feel like. When we were, when we were discussing the mortgage money, we're thinking people aren't going to move, they're not going to be doing anything. They're going to kind of hover close to home. And we were so wrong because with the mortgage money, if you look under 331, under account 3005, in December, we received 25,583, which is against the budget of 18,500. So that said, we only need a, you know, we're still going to meet our budget more than likely at the end of June, you know, when we're, when we receive the other half of this. So, yes, I did adjust for pandemic monies last year. I'm kind of keeping along the same pattern for this year.
Okay.
Because we still don't know what the story is.
Okay, great. Anything else?
Nope, not for me, I'm good.
Okay, anything else from any other board members? Okay, well, you know, I think really what we're left with and what we really have to think about is, you know, what, what Justin has proposed and the information that he's given us. And we obviously have our meeting on Tuesday, so we have to be prepared really. Each one of us has to be prepared to take an action on that.
On, on that topic, do we need to authorize Mary to prepare a different budget that includes that as a possibility so that we can vote? Or is there anything else procedurally we have to do to account for voting on that on Tuesday?
Well, Mary, you certainly could prepare the, you know, I mean, that's plugging it in.
I, I will give you an A and B budget. A will be what you have today with the modifications. And B will be the one that has a two and a half percent increase for your purposes. And you, next Tuesday, I need a vote so that we can move this forward and get it off my plate and to the state.
We're, we're assuming this is all or nothing. We don't want to discuss something in between like a one and a half or 2%.
We can discuss anything, we can discuss anything, but.
But if we have.
What was before us and, and based on, you know, what Justin's presented, I think that's the point of departure. Do we stay with what has already been drafted? A, or do we look at B? Or, okay. Is there something in between as you're saying? And that's something maybe you can bring back to the board as well, you know, as we all think about this going forward, you know? So you can't do, you know, you're, you're saying instead of A or B, you want one from column A and one from column B? Had to say that, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. I just, yeah, it's, it's hard to know what to do. So I think we're doing the right thing. Let's take this back and digest it a little bit and, and sit with it.
Yep, and you know, if our residents want to weigh in, please, everybody feel free to, you know, weigh, weigh in on this. I think this is, this is important. This is, it's the budget, it's how we move forward. All right, is there any other business that anybody has? Yes, Dorothea?
Real quick, I just want to remind the board, I did send out a notice requesting if any, we could start a little earlier, given the amount of items on our agenda for next Tuesday and the important items we have. Trustee Keating cannot make an earlier time, so it looks like we are going with 6:30. And I'm going to cut off trustee Stetser from her email so she can stop sending me agenda items. We are getting quite full.
Yeah, we could probably, I think you can take off the one I just sent because we already decided tonight that we. 25, so the discussion we ended up having tonight. So yay, we can take one off.
Great, no, I, what I'm just saying is take your vitamins, be ready. It's going to be a long night because we do have the organizational on there as well. I'm hoping to get things out. You might see the tentative packet Thursday instead of tomorrow, just giving the number items we have and then a final packet on Friday. So anything you have to add or whatever, please finalize right away, just because we do have a long agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, thanks, everybody. I make a motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
Trustee, like it?
Oh.
Like it, bye.
Oh.
Trustee Lampier?
Lampier, I.
Trustees Stetser?
Stetser, I.
Mayor Plummer?
Oh, Plummer, I.
I'm going to dinner, good night.
I will point out that y'all said it was going to be a short meeting.
Did Justin, did Justin say I?
I said I, yeah.
Oh, yeah, he said I right away.
Hot of here.
All right, good night all, it's been a joy.
Appreciate it.
Good night Brooklyn, thanks for joining. Good night Brooklyn. Thank you. Bye y'all.